Mr. Mayor, it is 7:00.
Thank you, Clerk. Welcome, everyone, to this regular meeting on Monday.
What happened to him?
Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And everybody will notice the flags we have flying and will be flying this entire month. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Gothelz.
Here.
Councilmember Papin?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Here.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Here. Okay, welcome again, everyone. Due to the health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, when signed into Zoom, you can use the raise your hand feature and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If you're calling in via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute yourself. These options for public comment will remain available until I close public comment for the period for that specific item. All right, we're going to move on to the first item on the agenda, which is a ceremonial item, and it is recognizing lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, transgender, and queer Pride Month. And I have a proclamation that we're gonna, that I'm gonna read, and then we have a guest that's gonna say a few words, so. Whereas the city of San Mateo recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2021 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month throughout San Mateo. And whereas the city of San Mateo joins the county of San Mateo to observe Pride Month with the pride flag raising ceremony to honor the history of the LGBTQ liberation movement and to support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas the rainbow flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQ people in society. And whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. LGBTQ individuals have had immeasurable, had an immeasurable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country. And whereas the city of San Mateo is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, and the city of San Mateo calls upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice wherever it exists. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for San Mateo County's LGBTQ community and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now, therefore, the city of San Mateo hereby recognizes June 2021 as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ community. Be it further resolved that the rainbow flag was raised on June 1st, 2021, recognizing all LGBTQ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make the city of San Mateo a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit. Signed, Eric Rodriguez, Mayor. Thanks, everyone, and we have a special guest here, Craig Weisner, from the county, is a county commissioner, LGBTQ commissioner. It's all yours, Craig.
Thank you so much. As a 15-year-old boy who had just figured out he was gay in 1973, the first thought that came to my mind was the question whether to be or not to be. Forty-six years later, seeing a pride flag flying at San Mateo City Hall, a progress flag flying at the county fair, and pride and progress flags flying over nearly every city and town in our county, to be definitely wins. On Sunday, a group of teens outside our shop on 25th Avenue saw a display of pride and progress flags and asked what they were all about. I explained that they were about celebrating diversity, LGBTQQIA-plus people, black, brown, white, Asian people. A little nervous about how they'd respond. One kid asked, are you part of that movement? I said, yes, I'm gay. Another then asked, what about him? Pointing to my partner. I answered, yeah, that's my husband, and we've been married for 32 years. Thirty-two years? One of the teens exclaimed, that's cool. Finding love, finding a community, feeling safe, feeling welcome, and feeling a call to serve, that's what you make happen when you raise the flag, when you spark conversations, when you inspire questions, even arguments. As a gray-haired, cisgender, white guy, I feel very safe and welcome here, but I know how much more work needs to be done for everyone representing God's wild diversity to feel safe and to be safe and welcome here in our city and our county. I want to thank you, the San Mateo City Council, for taking one step at a time, one step forward, so that every 15-year-old kid can see himself, herself, theirselves as not just welcome, but treasured for who they are and being a Samitan. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Craig, for sharing that story, and thank you for answering your call to serve. We're all very grateful. Take care. Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next item, which is the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, can you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number two, city council meeting minutes approval. Item number three, ordinance adoption, electronic campaign statement filing requirements, amendments as amended. Item number four, ordinance introduction, claims for tax refunds, chapter amendments including electronic claims filing. Item number five, senior transportation get-around program agreement. Item number six, senior catered lunch services program agreement. Item number seven, landscape maintenance services, medians, islands, and right-of-ways agreement. Item number eight, animal control services agreement. Item number nine, police department patrol vehicles, purchase and build-out contracts. Item number 10, fiscal year 2020-21 budget appropriation, police department. Item number 11, fiscal year 2021-22 general obligation bond, tax rate levy. Item number 12, citation processing services and traffic-moving citation equipment purchase agreement. Item number 13, 25th Avenue grade separation project and Delaware Street relief sewer project inter-agency amendment and agreements. Item number 14, clean water program labor compliance consultants amendments. Item number 15, sale of city-owned real property adjacent to private property abutting the Marina Lagoon. Item number 16, downtown affordable housing site planning-related costs, fund appropriation. Item number 17, downtown parking equipment network hosting and materials agreement. Item number 18, downtown business improvement area, resolution of intent for annual renew. Item number 19, below-market rate rental rates, sales prices, and unit community priorities, 2021 revisions. And item number 20, Park and Recreation Commission and Community Relations Commission appointment subcommittee recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. Is there any member of the public wishing to comment on any consent calendar item? Now would be the time to raise your hand. This is for the consent calendar items only.
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Councilmember Gothelz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, and we're gonna move on to public comment, and this is the time where members of the public wishing to comment on any item that is not appearing on the agenda, they can, may address the city council at this time. State law prevents the council from taking any action on any matter not on the agenda, but your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. And public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of hands raised. The first speaker will be Vince DeFreeze.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I don't know if you've received my letter about St. Timothy's Bingo Program? Yes, you have? Okay, good. I don't know if you want me to go over the letter exactly, but what I'm looking for is I run a bingo program at St. Timothy's Church and Parish and School. And with that, there's an ordinance, as you hopefully know about, in San Mateo that requires us to follow guidance from the ordinance and what we could do or can't do. So with that, there's a few different items on this letter that I've spelled out that I'd like to see about amending to, updated to today's times. If you would like, I could go over the three different items, or you guys could tell me otherwise.
This is your opportunity to comment on anything you'd like, but we're not allowed to respond.
Perfect, perfect. So with that, I'm referring to the San Mateo Municipal Code, Chapter 10.34, charitable bingo games and permits. So the first one is 10.34.120B. Change, right now, when we buy supplies for running bingo, which is like bingo cards, supplies to operate the bingo, including concessions, food concessions, right now, the ordinance says it's $1,000 maximum. We want to see about increasing that to $3,000. We feel that $1,000 is very low in buying supplies, especially in our economic times of what supplies cost. Going on to 10.34.160, this is a big one for us, is there's a price limit, and we'll only be able to offer any winner of a bingo of $250. The state statute, if you look at the gaming laws, is $500. We would like that to be increased to $500 so we could offer more awards when they hit a bingo, in a bingo game. And also, I would suggest, if it's okay, that we, that you would adopt, you know, to follow the state guidelines, because the state is pretty up on the gaming laws. And we also feel if we don't, if we are not able to offer at least $500 per game winnings, then we won't have people attend. They have a tendency to go to a lot of other bingo programs outside the city of San Mateo. I believe we're the only one left in San Mateo, but with that said, they'd like to go to other cities because they want to win bigger, okay? So we want to see about increasing that to $500 per game. Then we have 10.34.190. You have an ordinance that says basically there's winning tickets, okay? And a winning ticket could be like what we call tear tabs, it's kind of like a little portable bingo game, almost like a little miniature slot machine in a sense. And with that, you pay a dollar for these cards or, you know, a bingo card, and right now, the ordinance says anything over $25, we have to keep those cards. We have literally garbage bags of thousands of these tickets. We would love to see that changed to something over $100 winning, if that's possible. Today, a $25 winner is like nothing. They basically usually buy more tickets with a $25 winning, and it creates a lot of storage for us to retain all that. And then it also says if they win, that we have to sign these tickets, so, you know, we're having these workers that, you know, these volunteers go around and sign all these tickets. I don't see a necessary, unless it's a big winner of a thousand, excuse me, of $100 or more. And then last, I have just a, it's more of a clarification, because 10.34.260, 270, 280, 290, 300, 310, 320, and 330, it says that we have to have all these suppliers that provide us supplies to run our bingo program, they have to be licensed to the city. I guess they're supposed to be having a business license. How do we verify this? We have a lot of different vendors we're buying supplies from, and these suppliers are typically out of city, where it could be, it could be any of them, Amazon to a supplier in another city that, you know, delivers us. So we're trying to get clarification, how do we make sure they're licensed, or if there's any latitude to that?
Sir, may I mention that the time has exceeded by a few minutes now?
Okay, and I'm done, thank you for that, I'm done. That's basically the clarifications I'm looking for.
The next speaker is George.
Hi, council members. My name is George Lee. I'm from Everybody's Market here on Fourth Avenue. Recently, we've been given, from the state of California, the issue of providing a recycling center for our unserved area. And looking into this matter, the city of San Mateo has 16 zones for, they're called convenience zones, in which basically the public goes and turns in for CRV refund. The only served area out of those original 16 is at 860 North Delaware Street Safeway. Being unserved basically means we have one of two options. We have to either pay the CRV and become like a recycling place ourselves, our little store, or we pay a daily fee of $100 a day. And I just want to bring this up because it's a situation where we don't know what to do, because I'm not in an area where, you know, somebody once in a while comes in with a can. I'm in an area where you see cars filled to the brim with recyclables, or somebody pushing down a bike fully loaded with bags of recycling. And as a small business, I don't have the room to store all this. I would have to find the time, labor that goes into this to go to a recycling center and maybe get the full refund, which we don't, we know you don't get the full refund when you go to a recycling center. And I think the only recycling center that's open now is K&amp;J, and they have a limit, there's hour lines out there. So I just want to bring this to your guys' attention, because the only option right now I can personally take is the first option, which is to allow for my customers to bring in recyclables to get a refund, because $100 a day, it's not feasible. You're just gonna kill small businesses. And talking to a lot of my neighboring small businesses, they all thought the first notice was a scam. And so you might get a lot of small businesses being blindsided by this. So I just wanted to raise this to your attention. Yeah, thank you very much for this, new mayor.
Mr. Mayor, there are no other speakers.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna close public comment.
Mr. Mayor, one moment, please. If I could just let the speaker who just spoke know, if he's gonna be at his store tomorrow, I'm already on this, I'll stop by and talk to him. Can he just tell us what's a good time?
A moment, I had to allow him to talk again.
All right, Rick. When would be a good time for you? I'm there literally all day long.
10:00 AM, I'll come by 10:00 AM.
Awesome, I'll meet you. Great.
Okay, thank you. A question, Madam Clerk, in terms of the timer for tonight, do, how is it gonna work in this kind of, in this kind of hybrid model, or would you like me to try to keep time?
No, I, I put up the panel and the timer was going, did you not see it?
I did not see it, but that doesn't mean it wasn't there.
If you're in gallery view, you will see it.
All right.
I don't have it up right now, but.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. The next, we're gonna move on to the next item, number 21, which is the public hearing, and it's proposed 2021-22 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. The last item, item 20, was approving new commissioners. I just wanted to ask if they were present and whether it was appropriate to swear them in now, or we could do that another time.
Our practice has been to swear them in at their orientation, but if they're present, I'm happy to do that.
I leave it up to the mayor, but I think if they're here, it sounds good.
That's fine with me, if you want to do it now. Are you able to do it now, Madam Clerk, or?
I'm just looking through the appointee list to give them access.
Okay.
I see one appointee, Sarah Fields, I do not see Megan Crowell. All right, Sarah, if you could, you could raise your right hand and repeat after me, and after the first statement of "I," if you could state your full name.
Sure.
"I."
"I, Sarah Fields."
"Do solemnly swear."
"Do solemnly swear."
"That I will support and defend."
"That I will support and defend."
"The Constitution of the United States."
"The Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"Against all enemies."
"Against all enemies."
"Foreign and domestic."
"Foreign and domestic."
"That I will bear true faith."
"That I will bear true faith."
"And allegiance."
"And allegiance."
"To the Constitution of the United States."
"To the Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"That I take this obligation freely."
"That I take this obligation freely."
"Without any mental reservation."
"Without any mental reservation."
"Or purpose of evasion."
"Or purpose of evasion."
"And that I will well and faithfully."
"And that I will well and faithfully."
"Discharge the duties."
"Discharge the duties."
"Upon which I'm about to enter."
"Upon which I'm about to enter."
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to everyone on the council.
All right, so now we'll move on to the public hearing, item number 21, proposed 2021-22 budget and the 2021-26 capital improvement program, and we have our finance director, Rich Lee, here to present to us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Rich Lee, Finance Director. The item before you this evening is the proposed 2122 operating budget and the 2126 capital improvement program. Looking at the budget as a whole, we have, are recommending $253.6 million, and of that, the operating budget is $201 million, or nearly 80%, and the remainder ours for a capital improvement program at $52.6 million. The total funding sources, how we're paying for these appropriations, the majority of that is coming from taxes and charges for services. Those two funding sources alone, that comprises 75% of the total funding sources for the proposed budget for next year. The total operating budget, as mentioned before, $201 million. Public safety, that is 40% of the operating budget, and combined with public works, that's 60% of the total operating budget for next fiscal year. The operating budget by expenditure type, in other words, what is being paid for, salaries and wages, when you combine that with benefits and the contribution to SMC FIRE, that is 65% of our operating budget. So, and the majority of the budget for SMC FIRE, that is for personnel costs. So it's fair to say that 65% of our operating budget is for employee compensation. Looking at the operating budget by fund, by large, the general fund is the majority of our operating budget. When combined with the sewer enterprise fund, that's 90% of our budget. So that's precisely why we tend to focus on the general fund, because that's where our core services are accounted for, as well as the, most of our tax revenues. So on to the general fund. The proposed budget for the general fund, we're estimating $144.5 million in revenues, $146.8 million in expenditures. If this were to come to fruition by the end of next fiscal year, that would result in a $2.3 million net loss, which would ultimately end up reducing our rainy day reserve by that amount. For general fund reserves, the majority of this is from tax revenue, with property tax, again, being our, by far, our number-one revenue source. All tax revenue combined, that's over $100 million, and that is 74% of our total general fund revenue for next fiscal year. So drilling down into property tax, again, our number-one revenue source, $66.2 million. What the chart shows before you, nearly 30 years of historical property tax revenue, projections for the current fiscal year, the proposed budget for next fiscal year, and then the duration of the 10-year forecast specifically for property tax. On the next slide, I'm gonna talk about major factors that shape the 10-year forecast, as well as near-term factors. For next fiscal year, the increase in assessed value of approximately 4%. One component of that is the change in CPI for the state of California, or CCPI. The California Constitution limits the increase in assessed value on an annual basis by two, to 2%. However, there have been some years, as noted in the administrative report, where the change in CPI on a statewide basis has actually been less than 2%. This is one of those years, and that is reflected in the overall 4% increase in assessed value for next fiscal year. On the long term, again, the shortfall in the property tax in lieu of VLF, the estimate for the current fiscal year is a shortfall of $96.2 million. It is highly likely that that shortfall will increase to $120 million. That's related to one specific school district that is very close to changing from non-basic aid to basic aid status. As the council may be aware, there is a potential legislative fix. The city and every single city in San Mateo County has sent letters to Governor Newsom, Senator Skinner, and Assemblymember Ting, those are the chairs of the budget committees for the respective legislative bodies. We are looking for their support in addressing this issue, where instead of filing a claim with the state in the fall, following a VLF shortfall, we could potentially be made whole within the same fiscal year and have three subsequent cleanup periods. So we'll definitely keep the council apprised of future developments as they happen. Moving on to sales tax, our number-two revenue source for next fiscal year, we're anticipating $19.4 million in the local 1%, that's our Bradley Burns, and then the local quarter percent, that's Measure S, $6.1 million. Similar to property tax, I wanted to show the council, going back to 2002, all the way through the duration of the 10-year forecast to 2031, you can see we've gone through effectively three different recessions. The first, the dot-com boom bust, about, we had about a five-year recovery from that. The Great Recession, again, a five-year recovery. For the pandemic-related recession... we're anticipating about a four-year recovery to get back to the pre-pandemic baseline of 2018-19. There's major factors that are accounted for in our forecast. The first is the shift to online commerce, and that's been ongoing since the advent of online commerce. The major resellers first were actually not even collecting use tax. And it's taken quite some time for them to be compelled to collect use tax. But the behaviors of consumers have largely shifted, even more so with the pandemic, from brick and mortar to online. The second is that consumers have been purchasing more goods and experiences and less, sorry, more services and experiences and less goods. Services are not taxable in the state of California, while goods are. And that's quite different from a contrast compared to other states. In 2018, the Supreme Court reversed a longstanding case law in the United States related to collection of use tax. This was favorable for local government, essentially compelled online resellers. They no longer were required to have that physical presence in the state in order to be compelled to collect use tax. They're now compelled and required to collect use tax if they generate a certain threshold, which is left to each state to determine what that threshold is to collect use tax. So that's been an advantage to local government. A more recent development is what I'm calling localization of use tax. And there have been a handful of cities that have entered into agreements with major retailers from Best Buy to eBay and Walmart, where the use tax that would have gone to the county pools and then allocated to the taxing entities, excuse me, based on their share of the Bradley Burns, that's being reduced from those county pools and instead being recognized in those local cities. So moving on to the real property transfer tax, what I wanted to show to the council was the real estate metrics going to a year before the pandemic, all the way until present. So the first data set is the median sales price for a single-family residential property in San Mateo. It's pretty clear that the pandemic had really no impact on the median sales price. And in fact, it's appreciated over the past couple of months. The second metric is the inventory. We had a spike in inventory in the fall of 2020. That has fallen over the past couple of months, even below the pre-pandemic levels. The number of units sold, we've had, again, an accompanying spike in the past couple of months. Again, fairly immune from the pandemic. And the average days on market, it stayed fairly steady. In the past couple of months, we've been hovering somewhere around three weeks from the time that the property is put on the market to the time it's sold. This is accompanied by historically low mortgage interest rates. As of, let's see, June 3rd or 4th, it was just below 3%. So very low mortgage rates. And that's been the benefit to the city. We had anticipated for the current fiscal year being heavily impacted by the pandemic. And that's, actually, has not come to fruition. For the current fiscal year, we're estimating about $9.4 million in real property transfer tax. And for next fiscal year, we're anticipating that, given the real estate market's penchant for resilience, we anticipate that we should be able to return back to the 10-year average of $8.5 million for the duration of the remainder of the 10-year forecast. Moving on to transient occupancy tax. Doing this a little bit backwards, I want to talk about the major factors first. Our tax base specifically for the city of San Mateo is business travel. That's important when it comes to the recovery. And based on the information that we have from various economists, from UCLA Anderson to the Visitors Bureau, to representatives from SFO, they're all saying that we believe the recovery will be somewhere around 2025. But that's for tourism at large. Specifically for business travel, business travel may not ever recover. That's because of the shift that we've had been forced to do to the virtual space. We may not ever transition back because of the convenience and reduction in costs. And that's what leads to our projection for transient occupancy tax. Again, similar to the previous tax types, showing the long-term, nearly 30-year historical, the current year and next fiscal year projections, and then the remainder of the forecast, showing a pretty modest recovery. And if you compare the pre-pandemic year of 2019, which we had $7 million in general fund, TOT, to 2031, the year 10 of our 10-year forecast, we will barely get back to 50% of where we were pre-pandemic. So it's a pretty dire projection for what we're seeing from local economists. Intergovernmental, we're expecting $12.5 million. Of course, this is because of the American Rescue Plan Act. The city's estimated share of that is $19.27 million. We've already received $9.6 million of that in the current fiscal year. We will receive the remaining half for next fiscal year. So that's the lion's share of the proposed budget for 2022. That isn't a $630,000 increase from the prior estimate. The reason for the increase, previous estimates came from the, let's see, the Congressional Research Service. And this is simply, now that the allocations have become more firm, that's why the city's share has gone up, because it's a difference from the previous estimate. I'm going to pause right there to see if there's any questions from council on the overall budget, the general fund revenues, before I transition on to general fund expenditures.
I don't see any hands raised, so.
Okay, I'm going to keep going. So general fund expenditures, $146.8 million. As shown in the chart, a good portion of that comes from public safety costs for the San Mateo Police Department and the city's contribution to San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department. It's important to note that the city's contribution to SMC FIRE, that's really two components. One is the 60% share of the operating costs. That's, on top of that, there's the legacy costs. So there's pension, retiree medical, workers' compensation, legacy costs that were incurred from former fire department employees that remain with the city and that we continue to amortize for quite some time. I also want to point out that the, on the general fund expenditures, the fiscal sustainability plan is folded into the proposed budget for next year. First, the employee compensation element, $3 million of projected savings. And that's the equivalent of two years of no increase in the cost of living adjustment. We have the strategic and permanent elimination of vacant positions valued at approximately $1 million in fully burdened costs. I'm going to go into that in a bit more detail on the next slide. Revenue enhancement. The San Mateo voters did pass Measure W in November 2020. That increased the city's TOT rate from 12% to 14%. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic, that revenue enhancement has not materialized in the short term. We're hopeful that that will provide some relief in the long term. And CIP funding, the Construction Services Fund, supplanting the general fund for a period of five years to provide funding for our capital improvement program for other CIP projects, including the streetlight LED replacement. So I mentioned the strategic and permanent elimination of vacant positions. We have seven full-time equivalent positions valued at $1 million in fully burdened rate. These are the seven positions. And the important thing to note is that we do not anticipate a reduction in the service level. One, because we've identified new technology, including the online permit system, the online business tax certificate, where we can apply and renew business tax certificates online. That's really, we're able to offset these, elimination of these vacant positions because of those efficiencies that we've identified through those new technologies. And on to the long-term financial plan. There's really one thing I want to point out to the council, and this is a recurring theme from the previous preview from April. And that's the drawdown on the rainy day reserve. So the rainy day reserve is the amount of fund balance in the general fund that is above and beyond our policy of 25% as well as the housing set aside. So we reached a peak in fiscal year 2019 of $54 million. And we anticipate by 2027 drawing down upon that rainy day reserve by $30 million. And again, I want to put into context, this is with $19.27 million coming in from the federal stimulus. And we are still drawing down on our rainy day reserve by $30 million. Councilmember Lee, you had a great comment at our April budget preview. And the comment was to the effect of the historical context of the general fund budgeted expenditures in relation to our general fund fund balance. So I've prepared a chart that shows over time this relationship. So if you'll give me 30 seconds to show this to the council. So this goes back to 2003. And you can see general fund budget expenditures. We go through the Great Recession, and that relationship dwindles. In anticipation of future recessions, we start to build that nest thing back up. And then in 2020, obviously, we know what happened. And we can see, again, we're drawing down on that fund balance through 2027. And then you'll see that relationship improve slightly through 2031. I'm going to pause there before I move on to the capital improvement program.
That was really cool, Rich.
I agree. That was cool.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on. Yes, please.
Councilmember Lee has a question.
That was very cool. Oops. I wanted to, I wanted to give you or Drew an opportunity to put some more color on the, sort of the lens of equity versus opportunistic opportunism versus sort of finding efficiencies through technology that has driven some of the decisions about our fiscal sustainability plan in relation to the, you know, the way that we take care of our employees and making a really hard ask of our employees to take concessions two years in a row. So, you know, I think it's really important for the public to have some, you know, some more visibility to some of the thought process that's been driving the way that these efficiencies have been found. And making sure that we're achieving, you know, parity between the management units and our central frontline workers.
So I'll take that. I'll start. So there were two aspects of the fiscal sustainability plan that had to do with, you know, positions and either temporarily or permanently freezing positions. So there was $3 million for the current fiscal year, the 2021 fiscal year that we said, look, we're going to hold vacancies open to save money. And our target savings is 3 million. And that was, I think those savings were, you know, ultimately more opportunistic than anything. And what I mean by that is that, you know, if you had positions open in the general fund when we decided to use that as a mechanism to save money, then you were impacted. If you didn't have positions open or vacant, you weren't impacted by that. So it wasn't equitable across the organization. But how we even that out over time was, you know, 3 million was a baseline number. And as soon as we had enough vacancies where we were above 3 million in savings, I started to open back up positions, right, to keep us at a $3 million baseline, but then start to fill positions in high-need areas and in areas that were having service level impacts while other positions became vacant. So it sort of, again, sort of equalized over the course of the year. And we did continue to fill positions throughout the year strategically, focusing on, you know, the biggest areas of impact that were creating service level impacts. You know, as an example, in Parks and Recreation, they had some vacancies in, I believe it was, parks maintenance workers. But they also had a situation where they had employees that had been out on leave for an extended period of time. So if you've got two people out on leave and you've got two vacancies that are being held, that's four positions out of not a lot of positions. And so that was having a big service level impact. So when we exceeded that $3 million mark of savings, we opened up positions for them to fill, right? So those were the types of considerations that we had when we were dealing with sort of the temporary saved $3 million in personnel costs by holding positions vacant. Transitioning over to then the permanent positions, those were really looking at what positions could we close permanently because we had technology that was helping us be more efficient or we had just other considerations. And those were all positions that, you know, I had discussions with department heads and with managers about what could be done without impacting service levels. You know, in one case, one of the positions was a shared administrative position between, you know, the city manager's office, the city attorney's office, HR. And we just determined that, you know, with the changes in the pandemic and, you know, due to the pandemic, that we would just be able to live without that position. It might be a little inconvenient. It might change the way people have to handle coverage and phones. But it was something that we could deal with without really impacting service levels. In one case, like the senior facilities worker, you know, the situation there was that was a position that was vacant. And when San Mateo Consolidated Fire had moved to become its own organization, our facilities, City of San Mateo facilities, no longer supported them. So that was six fewer buildings that had to be serviced by our facilities crew. So that created a situation where we could close that position and not impact service levels because we had, you know, six fewer buildings that needed to be serviced. So those are just two of the examples from that list of seven. But those were the considerations was really, if we were going to close a position, it was really about areas where we felt like we had an opportunity to do so without impacting overall service levels. You know, with respect to the, you know, part of the fiscal sustainability plan that addresses compensation concessions, you know, very early on in the pandemic, the department heads and the deputy department heads who are under a compensation agreement and not an MOU were just told that they were going to be taking two years with no salary increases. Our management unit and our general employees unit were in contract and opted to extend their contract and worked with the finance department to creatively create concessions that got them to the equivalent of two years of zero salary over the course of their extended contract. And then the other bargaining units were towards the end of their agreements and opted to, instead of, you know, getting involved in contract talks six months before their contract was over, they opted to just handle it through the standard bargaining process. And so we're in discussions with them right now but are continuing to look for them to take concessions similar to what the other units did. And Rich and the finance crew have been working with them to provide options that are maybe not two years of zero salary increase, but instead are different sorts of compensation concessions that get to that same point or can get to that same dollar amount by unit. And if I missed anything or Rich wants to add anything, I'll stop talking for now.
So, I mean, and so I think the bottom line is, what I hear you saying is that, is that across the entire organization, all, everyone is being asked to make concessions. is that across the entire organization, all everyone is being asked to make concessions.
Yes.
And and just remind, just as a reminder, it, you know, early on in the pandemic, we we went into a skeleton crew to ensure safety and continued full pay for all employees. Is that, wasn't that the case?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, you know, there were certain, you know, I'd say for the first three or four weeks of the pandemic, when we were really trying to figure out, you know, what we were going to do and how we were going to work safely. You know, we were able to transition a lot of our employees to to work from home status. But we do have a number of employees that that can't work from home. And so we were for a period of time doing, you know, skeleton crews, as you say, just just to make sure that we could work safely and while we figured things out. And we were able to get them folks all all back to work pretty pretty soon thereafter. But we were able to make sure we were able to to do it safely. And I think that that's been something we've worked really hard at up and down the organization throughout the entire pandemic is is really taking a safety-first approach with providing providing city services.
And and isn't it also the case that there were no no workplace-related COVID outbreaks or or even any cases that that were traced back to workplace transmission?
I would have to ask if our HR director, Director Casey Hartzell could address that. I don't know that that answer off the top of my head.
Okay.
And I don't know if she's on. I might have to. I might have to get back to you on that.
Thank you for the just helping us jog our memories about, you know, how far we've come and the fact that we've been able to preserve so many jobs throughout this pandemic with record-high unemployment rates.
Thank you for your comment, Councilmember Lee and Drew. Thank you for chiming in. Absent any further questions, I'm going to move on to the capital improvement program for 2021 through 2026. So the I've got the the sanitary sewer and wastewater management line highlighted. That is our clean water program. That represents the bulk of our five-year CIP. That's 60% for the current fiscal year. And the lion's share, as you can see in the maroon portion of the bar graph for the clean water program. We are, and you can see that it's kind of tapering off in the year four and year five. That's because that represents the, we're nearing the completion of the clean water program in 2025. In terms of the funding sources, where the money is coming from to pay for these projects, again, because these are largely clean water program projects, they're largely coming from the sewer enterprise fund. So overall, for the for 2022, $52.6 million in funding sources. I just want to highlight for year two, the other column, that's the kind of the lightish brown, $34.6 million. $11 million of that is a grant from the CPUC for the 25th Avenue undergrounding phase two. That's going to relocate all overhead electrical below ground. That's pursuant to Rule 20A. That's on 25th Avenue from El Camino Real to Delaware. In 2425, he'll note of an elevated amount for other, that's for a new downtown parking garage, we're anticipating just under $18 million in bond proceeds to finance the cost of that. Again, back to the clean water program for the five-year period, we're looking at just north of $130 million. Drilling down on that a bit for the collection system, that's the majority of the cost, $78.4 million over the five-year period, with the bulk of that coming in year three of the five-year CIP at $31 million. So this is the first budget hearing for the budget. I will come back to the council June 21st for the second hearing and then adoption. Happy to address any further questions of the council.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Pappen?
One quick question, Rich, on the vehicle license fee shortfall. Those numbers you gave us, those were county numbers, right? That 120 million?
Correct. That's a, I thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to clarify. Yes, $120 billion shortfall potential. One school district in particular is very, very close to changing from non-basic aid to basic aid. At present, there are only five school districts remaining that are non-basic aid. Once they essentially generate enough property tax to meet their minimum funding requirement, then they become basic aid, and their property tax is no longer available to backfill the property tax in lieu of the left that all of the cities and the counties are owed.
So just a follow-up question, and what would our share of that be? That 120 million dollars?
So the 90, so the shortfall as of right now for the countywide is $96.2 million. And our share of that is 5.7, if I remember correctly. Yes, 5.7. And if it were to increase to 120 billion dollars, I can't do that math in my head, but it would be proportional. And what we're told by the county is, if and when that does happen, that difference would not be taken out of the current fiscal year, but in fiscal year 2022.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions from council?
All right, I'm not seeing any. Excellent presentation, Rich. It's great, thorough, great graphics. I loved the little animation. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is a hearing, so we have to get public comment.
That is a good idea. I would like to open up a public comment.
Mr. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
Okay, I'll close public comment. Is there any comments from council members? Or additional questions? Okay.
I just want to say thank you very much to our finance director for a job very well done, a very thorough presentation. I think it really helps the public and me to be able to understand all the moving parts here, and there are a lot, many different consequential factors that come into play. So skillfully done, Richard. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Pappen, did you have your hand up?
Well, I did. I just want to say that the the fiscal sustainability aspect of the budget is tremendously important to longevity and the health of our city. So I am grateful that we have this plan in place and that it will result in long-term fiscal health for our city. So thanks for laying that out and emphasizing it. I really appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else? All right. Thanks again, Rich. Great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to close that item and move on to the next item, which is old business, item number 22, ordinance introduction, short-term rentals amendment. And we have Denise Garcia here to present to us.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I'm just getting this all ready.
No worries.
Hey, hi, everyone. My name is Denise Garcia, and I'm a management analyst in the city manager's office. And tonight I'm here to present on the short-term rentals ordinance and the amendment to that ordinance. So first, staff presented an ordinance to city council that would help regulate short-term rentals and minimize their impacts on San Mateo neighborhoods. The city council approved of those regulations that were included in the ordinance and adopted it on February 1st of this year. While the staff were preparing the outreach materials to implement the new ordinance, we identified clarifications needed in the ordinance in order to regulate the short-term rentals in a manner intended by the city council at the time that it was adopted. Today, staff is here to present the amended ordinance and ask the council to introduce it. And as for some background, July 1st is the effective date for the permit requirements, which means all short-term rentals must comply with the ordinance by this date. Staff worked with the consultant HDL companies to develop the permit materials, which included the online application portal. And also outreach has begun to the current short-term rental operators. Here's a list of the three amendments made to the ordinance. The first is to, is the first amendment is to clarify that accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs, are excluded from operating as short-term rentals. This clarification is needed to maintain the city code consistency. For example, Chapter 27.19 states that ADUs shall not be rented for less than 30 days and also requires that a deed restriction be recorded with this restriction in place. The second amendment is to replace the term primary residence with dwelling units, which better reflects the city council's original intention to not limit short-term rental operators to only primary residents. Instead, any legal dwelling unit except for ADUs can operate as a short-term rental. The third amendment is to clarify that only annual limits pertain to short-term rental properties when a host is not on site. In the original draft of the short-term rental ordinance, it accidentally restricted all short-term rentals to that 120-day limit. However, city council agreed to only limit the number of rental days per year for properties where a host is not present on site. So this amendment better reflects city council's original intention of not setting any limits to hosted short-term rentals and limiting only to those where a host is not present. So as for our recommendation, we ask that you introduce an ordinance to amend municipal code, Chapter 5.66, Short-Term Rentals, to clarify that only properties where the host is not on site have an annual limit on the number of days they can be rented. Secondly, that short-term rental properties do not need to be the owner's primary residence. And lastly, that accessory dwelling units cannot be used for short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. All right. Do we have any questions by any council member? All right, I'd like to go to public comment and see if there's any members of the public that would like to comment on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to close a public comment and bring it back to the council for any comments or additional questions. So Denise, I think this happens when you have a very clear presentation that's very effective. So thank you so much.
I'll move that we introduce it.
I second.
Okay.
Adam Clark, can you call it?
Councilmember Pappen?
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, and thanks again. All right, we're going to move on to the the next item in old business, item number 23, COVID-19 update, and we have our city manager, Drew Corbett.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez, members of the council. Are you able to see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I just have a pretty brief update for this evening. I just want to start with the the vaccine update, pretty amazing numbers for San Mateo County with 85% of residents over 16 years of age and 83% of residents over 12 years of age already have at least one dose of the vaccine. So as you're aware, the state is set to lift most COVID-19 restrictions on Tuesday of next week. So that means no physical distancing requirements, no capacity limits indoors or outdoors, and and aligning their masking guidelines with the Center for Disease Control. So that's going to mean some changes for us, and so we're working through kind of what what our operations are going to look like post-June 15th. For City Hall, we're targeting a return of close-to-normal operations July 1st. But for our customers, you know, City Hall is going to look pretty normal to the public starting June the 15th. The doors are going to be open. People will be able to come in and get services. Obviously, we've we've put a lot of of infrastructure in place for people to be able to do business with the city online, and that's still a very efficient way that to do business that we'll continue to encourage. But, you know, certainly customers will be welcome back in starting next next Tuesday. We're still working through the Cal-OSHA regulations for having more people on site and being able to manage that. So so the back office may look a little different. We're still going to have many of our office employees having some sort of hybrid schedule going forward. But but ultimately, from the public's perspective, City Hall should look pretty normal starting starting next week. As far as in-person council meetings go, we're testing the technology for hybrid in-person slash remote meetings. So Patrice is running a meeting from from council chambers tonight, and so we'll debrief on that and and make sure we get all the bugs worked out. It is important to note that the governor's order that that waives certain Brown Act requirements, including the requirement that there's a quorum of council on site, that waiver is still in effect. And what the information we're getting is that we will be given plenty of notice before they plan on on rescinding that particular order. So the bottom line is, is it is not imminent for us to need to return to in-person council meetings. We're still working through that. And similarly with with City Hall operations, we're really trying to to hash out the Cal-OSHA regulations and what and what they would mean for in-person council meetings. So so more to come on that, but we are preparing for when we need to return to to in person. As far as Parks and Recreation goes, lots going on there with with the with the reopening of California. So the the Beresford and King Centers are going to reopen to the public on June the 15th. The senior center is going to begin some limited in-person programs on July 8th. They've been able to add weekend afternoon rec swim Saturday at Joinville, Sundays at King. Our summer camp programs begin on June 21st, so in a couple of weeks. We're going to be able to have the a limited Central Park music series, and it'll start with the July 4th event, and then there'll be four other events. We'd initially thought we would have pre-registration and limit attendance, but but with the the new orders from the state, we're not going to require pre-registration. And we do plan on ending the free use of park space for indoor gyms. We're planning to end that on June 30th. Businesses could still apply under a nor normal park permit process as a private business, but we do feel like with capacity limits going away, that that it's no longer necessary that we provide this service. As far as the library goes, they're looking to expand all their their locations to 75% of pre-pandemic operational hours by July the 6th. So the main library is going to return to a seven-day schedule. The branches are going to be open six days a week. The aim is to get to 100% service restoration by the first week of September. And the real driver behind behind this and why we're not able to go to 100% sooner is, you know, the the library is really driven by part-time per DM employees, and we're just not certain we're going to be able to bring all the people back that that were employed with us prior. We're not sure everyone's going to want to come back. They're still assessing what they're going to be able to do from an operational perspective as far as staffing goes. So they're they're starting a little bit conservative and and going to go to 75% operational on the 6th of July and then hope to ramp up as soon as possible to the to the 100%. And we do expect, you know, I would expect that if they are able to to staff at a at a higher rate than than they're expecting, they'll get back to 100% sooner than September, if at all possible. They're going to start expanding services on the 6th as well, so the study rooms will be open. The computer use will be available for three hours a day. It's currently limited to one hour a day per person. And basically, people will be able to come at come into the library and and not have time limits for the time they're available to to be there to study or to read or use the Wi-Fi. All the spaces at the main library are going to be open, except the computer labs won't be open for classes yet. And the community meeting rooms won't be open except for limited library programs. And similarly with with the rest of the library services, we'll be looking to expand upon that as as soon as we're able to do so. And so with that, I'd like to get asked for council's confirmation to tonight on the actions that are to be taken in response to the emergency proclamation. And those actions would be our phased return to normal plans for Parks and Recreation, City Hall, and library operations. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Drew. Do we have any questions from council? I had one question, Drew, about Concert in the Park. I know that there was some talk about moving it to the the ball field where so we'd be able where, so we'd be able to control attendance. So now will it be just as, just as it was before now?
Sheila can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe it's going to be just as it was before. There, there'll just be fewer events this year.
Great.
That's correct. We will be back on the great line.
Sounds good. Okay, so if there's no questions from council, I'd like to open up public comment and see if there's anything the public would like to say.
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised at this time.
All right, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for any further comments or questions.
Let me give also approve the city manager's actions, confirm his, his actions.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Yes, sir. Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
We have, persona, please.
Yeah, if I may ask, just a quick question for, since the agenda item description simply to receive the report, I, I don't think you necessarily need to make a motion to approve it necessarily. I think just, you know, by consensus, just agreeing that the actions are acceptable is, is just fine. But I also look to the city manager for confirmation of that, that as well.
Yeah, well, I mean, typically, we would, you know, council would, would move to confirm the actions. But I think, you know, however, however you see fit in terms of getting us, getting us the actions we need to do is, is fine, as long as we get the confirmation that's needed.
Okay, is there anyone that's not, does not agree with confirming these actions? Okay, does that, does that work, persona?
So I, I think that works. It's just more comporting with the agenda description.
Okay. Well, there you have it, Drew.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, we'll close that item and move on to new business, item number twenty four, development impact fee study report review. And we have Brian Alexander here to present to us. Welcome, Brian.
Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Let me just share my screen here. Okay, hopefully you can see my PowerPoint.
Yes, we can.
Okay. So, good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and members of council. My name is Brian Alexander. I'm a senior management analyst in the Community Development Department. I am also joined tonight by Kushbu Hussain, who is a senior manager with Manic Matrix Consulting Group, our consultant on the impact fee updates. So this next item before you this evening is a presentation of the findings of our development impact and in-loofy studies that staff and consultants have conducted over the past year. As you recall, in fiscal year nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one, council included an update of the city's development impact fees as one of the goals in its strategic plan. This review of the impact and in-loofy is was part of a broader examination of several fees across the city that has been conducted over the past year. This began with an update of our cost allocation plan and was followed by a study of our development-related user fees and community developments, which we presented to council back in February. Tonight, we have moved on to the third stage of this process. As noted in this slide, we aren't asking you to take any action on the impact or in-loofy tonight, but instead are looking for guidance and any feedback you may have on some of the proposed structural changes or fee amounts. So as part of this process, we made an effort to conduct as comprehensive a review as possible with regard to our fees. We looked at impact and in-loofy is across community development, public works, and Parks and Recreation. This slide shows you which fees were a part of this review that we are presenting tonight. There are also three fees that were not formally studied as part of this process, primarily because they were very recently updated. But we have accounted for them in this study to evaluate the full fee burden on a given project and for comparison purposes with other jurisdictions. So before we go any farther in reviewing individual fees, Kushbu is going to run through the methodology that was utilized in evaluating the impact and in-loofy fees, as well as some of the legal requirements that govern these types of fees.
Thanks, Brian. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So an impact fee is slightly different than user fees in that it can only be used to fund infrastructure and capital related cost, capital related costs. So while user fees can be used to account for, for service-based and personnel costs, no operating costs can be funded through impact fees. And when we're evaluating impact fees, we're really looking at different growth projections, using utilizing a level of standard methodology, which basically means that we're trying to determine what are the infrastructure needs that the city has in order to maintain its existing level of standard as it relates to its current key service areas. So some of the areas we looked at, like Parks and Recreation, childcare, transportation. When we were looking at city growth, we looked at regional projections from A-BAG, as well as looking at other city-related master plans, capital project plans. We looked at the type of development, so ensuring that, again, when we're looking at residential projects, we're looking at dwelling units, and when we're looking at impacts for commercial development, we're looking at square footage. It's a, it's a very important component of ensuring that the nexus is relatable and proportional to the type of development. And lastly, we looked at creating an administrative fee. Per the mitigation fee act, you're allowed to recover administrative costs associated with impact fee reporting requirements. So we wanted to make sure again that as, through this process, we're calculating the legally justifiable maximum fee. Next slide. Oh, we skipped ahead. And so going off of kind of that legal regulation, basically the impact fee is governed by AB sixteen hundred and the mitigation fee act, which requires that all impact fees must meet these five criteria. The first one is the most important one, what is the purpose of the fee? So really, why is the fee being collected? How will that fee revenue will, will be utilized? And again, it's very important to clarify that the fee revenue can only be used towards capital and infrastructure-related projects, ensuring that there's a clear benefit between what the fee is being applied to and the type of development that's occurring in the city. And related to that, ensuring that there's a clear impact. So if there's new development happening, what is that proportional, what is that relatable impact? And then the last part is the proportionality, ensuring that new development is not paying for existing development or existing deficiencies that the city has. So the nexus analysis that we conducted basically demonstrates how each of the impact fees is able to meet these, these required criteria. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Brian.
Thank you, Kushbu. So moving on, I'm going to start with the in-loofy that we studied. The, the first two are the tree replacement and landscape in-loofy. We're actually already adopted and going to affect July first, but they're just here to sort of show you the methodology behind them. The tree replacement fee is charged in instances where a street or heritage tree is removed and not replaced by the applicant. And then the landscape in-loofy applies when a tree that is not a street or heritage tree is removed and not replaced. And so in both instances, the fee calculation is the labor cost and then the cost of the tree itself. The other in-loofy that we studied is the art in public places fee. This fee applies to commercial and multifamily projects with a building permit valuation that's greater than three million dollars. A developer can work with the city and the Civic Arts Commission to provide art on premises to receive credit against the fee. They could pay into the Art in Public Places Fund in lieu of providing arts, or they can pursue some combination of both. And so in reviewing this fee, staff and consultants looked at the average annual value of the public art that's been commissioned by the city over the last several years, as well, as well as the cost of an art master plan. While the city does not currently have an art master plan, staff and consultants believe that it would be helpful to more clearly define the goals, outcomes, and public art needs within the city. And so in combining those costs, we arrived at that full cost fee of one point one nine percent of the valuation. Again, this is an in-loofy, so the development would only be paying into the Art in Public Places Fund if there was not public art provided on site as part of the development. So now we are going to shift gears into impact fees, and first are the park impact and in-loofy. Currently, the city actually has both an impact and an in-loofy, depending on whether the parcels are subdivided. So residential projects that require the subdivision of land are assessed a park in-loo or quimby fee, which is used primarily for land acquisition costs. And then those are residential projects that do not require the subdivision of land are assessed the park impact fee, which can be used for capital-related expenses, including land, facilities, and equipment pertaining to the city's parks infrastructure. The fees are currently set at the same level and are based on the cost of an acre of land in San Mateo. So as staff and consultants evaluated these fees, it became clear that there's no longer really a need to have a standalone fee for residential projects that require the subdivision of land. Instead, what staff and consultants are proposing is to combine the park impacted in-loofy fees into a single park impact fee that would apply regardless of whether or not a subdivision of land is required. So this new impact fee would account for the full cost of development on the city's park infrastructure. So include not only the cost of land to maintain our standard of two acres per thousand resident, but it would also cover identified capital improvement costs as well. We also expanded the number of land uses included in the nexus study to include commercial and non-residential projects, which I will show you on the next slide. And then lastly, with respect to the park impact fees, the city currently allows developers to request credits against the fee if they provide certain onsite amenities or recreation facilities. So as a result, many projects do not ultimately end up paying the full park impact fee, and that is proposed to continue under the new consolidated fee model as well. So when we took all of those things into account, the cost of land, and then our standard acres per resident requirement, as well as the capital improvement costs needed to maintain park and rec infrastructure, we identified the full cost fees that are shown here on this slide. So as this table shows, the current fee is not charged on non-residential uses, but this report does establish a nexus between commercial or non-residential uses and the park infrastructure costs due to employee use of park facilities. The next fee that we examined is the childcare development fee. The city levies this fee on large commercial developments to mitigate the need for childcare facilities and spaces driven by those developments. In reviewing this fee, the staff and consultants looked at both the existing and projected demand for childcare in San Mateo, along with construction costs for various types of facilities. So this slide shows the current fee and the full cost fee by land use. A couple of things to note here. As you can see, this fee is not currently charged on residential uses, but there is a nexus to charge up to the full cost shown in the right column. On the commercial front, you can see that the cost per square foot actually decreases based on the full cost of the fee. But an important consideration to note is that while the current fee applies only to projects of ten thousand square feet or more, that does not have to be the case based on this nexus analysis. That threshold was a policy decision made by the city council at the time this fee was first adopted. So this council could choose to charge all projects regardless of size up to the full cost shown here. Next, public works staff and matrix looked at the transportation improvement fee, which applies across a wide range of projects and mitigates the impact of future development on the city's transportation infrastructure. In reviewing this fee, staff considered a number of different factors, but primarily wanted to ensure that the project listing of future transportation improvements was up to date and that it was reflective of current construction costs. I also want to note that because there are implications for the transportation improvement fee and the city's transportation network in the general plan, that the city will be revisiting this fee in a more holistic way once the general plan update is complete. So this update really serves as an interim review of the TIF to right-size the fee amount until that more holistic review takes place. So again, this slide shows you a comparison of our current fee versus our full cost to provide those transportation improvements based on the future demands imposed by various land uses. And you'll notice that the full cost also shows charges for institutions and hotels, which are not currently charged a transportation improvement fee based on our current fee structure. So all, of all the land uses here, multifamily shows the smallest increase over the current fee rate, but all land uses are currently under-recovering based on the actual transportation infrastructure costs associated with those developments. And then the last set of fees that city, the city and consultants evaluated are the city sewer fees. Again, public works staff work with a separate consultant to study and update these fees. And currently, the city charges three sets of sewer impact or connection fees. And those are the wastewater treatment plant phase two expansion fee, the sewer connection fees, and, and the sewer connection fees, which are charged on all projects. And those located in the South Trunk Sewer Service Area, which is sort of noted by this blue bounded area of the map here, are also charged the South Trunk Sewer Improvement Fee to fund improvements for that area in particular. So in evaluating these fees and taking a look at how the capital improvement plans and the wastewater system have changed over time, the consultant recommended a single set of wastewater capacity charges that would apply uniformly across the city. So as noted on the slide, essentially the entire system, rather than a single service area like South Trunk, stands to benefit from future infrastructure improvements, so those costs can be spread out across the city. The fee would be based on an average cost approach, and new connections would pay a proportionate share of the average cost of existing and planned facilities needed to meet the demands of our service area. So the charges have been standardized based on wastewater strength and the meter size or the average daily flow. And this table is slightly different from the others in that it shows you the current fee for residential projects, both inside and outside the South Trunk Sewer Area, along with the full cost calculated through this study. Commercial and non-residential uses will have varying fee amounts based on the meter size, the number of connections, the wastewater strength in those facilities. And so it's very difficult to provide a good comparison here. However, we do have some prototypes on the next several slides that make assumptions about the water usage to illustrate those changes. So as I just noted, one of the things that staff and consultants did to help set the context for the fee findings was look at a number of different prototype projects and how San Mateo's current and full cost fees compare with those of our surrounding jurisdictions. All of the comparison slides follow the same format, so I'll spend just a little bit of time on this slide here to orient you to what the graphs are showing. The title at the top of the slide shows the specifics of the development. So in this case, we are looking at the impact fees to be charged to a single-family residence that is twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty square feet in size. The different color bands on the bar graphs represent the different impact fee types, which are shown in the legend at the bottom of the page. It's important to note the city does not charge all the fees noted on the bottom, but some of our comparison jurisdictions do. So we've included them in the graphs to compare the full development impact fee burden that will be borne by each of these projects across all of those comparison jurisdictions. And then each stacked bar here represents the jurisdiction and what they would currently charge a project of this type based on their current fee schedule. So here, the one at the far left shows what our current fee would be based on our current impact fee levels for a single-family residence. And then the second bar column here shows what the full cost fees are based on this development impact fee studies. And then the last thing I want to note is the dotted line that goes across the graph shows the jurisdictional average. That's sort of taking the average of everything else that's in the graph beyond the two city of San Mateo bars. So on the first chart, you can see that our current impact fees are just under thirty-seven thousand dollars, which is below the average of our surrounding jurisdictions for single-family residences. And based on the review of our impact fees, the full cost to the city for a single-family residence is actually just under sixty-two thousand dollars. And that jump is primarily driven by increases in the park impact sewer connection and childcare fees for those particular types of land uses. The next development type that we looked at is a one hundred and forty-four thousand square foot multifamily projects with a hundred eighty units. In this case, again, the city's current impact fee levels put it below the average of its comparison jurisdiction. The full cost amount in this case is higher than the average of the comparisons, but below several, including Millbrae, San Bruno, and Palo Alto. And again, the increase noted here is mostly driven by higher park sewer connection and childcare fees for multifamily land uses. I just also want to point out that, as I noted earlier, projects are able to apply for a reduction in their park impact fees if they provide certain onsite amenities or recreational facilities. So they may not actually end up paying the full calculated fee amount for the park impact fee that's shown here on this graph. Next, we'll take a look at a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot retail project. And so here we can see that this type of project would currently pay less than twenty-five thousand dollars in impact fees, which is roughly half of the average of the comparison jurisdictions here. The nexus analyses show that the city could justifiably charge roughly eighty-three thousand dollars for this type of development. As showed in the chart, most of that full cost amount is driven by the transportation improvement fee, which is this yellow band here. The transportation improvement fee is calculated based on the number of trips that are generated by that land use type. And so our analysis showed that retail generates more trips per square foot than any of the other land uses studied, and that the city is currently under-collecting for the transportation improvement fee on retail projects, which is why you see such a large increase here in this particular prototype. So two, two more to look at. This slide, we're looking at a So two, two more to look at. Uh, this slide, we're looking at a 150,000 square foot office development. And as you can see, such a project would pay about $5 million in impact fees at current rates, which is above the roughly four and a half million uh dollar average of the comparison jurisdictions. Uh, and you'll note that about 80% of the current fee that we charge is related to our commercial linkage fee. Uh, so on this graph and the following graph, we actually added a third column to show the full fee burden holding a commercial linkage fee constant. So I noted at the top that that it was not included in the formal review that we that we conducted as part of this study. Um, we did participate in a county commercial linkage fee feasibility study, uh, which looked at higher rates, which is what is accounting for this $6 million number here. Um, but it was outskied the scope of the analysis we're presenting you tonight, and the high end of the range would put us well above all of our surrounding jurisdictions. So as a result, we added this third column to this and the following slide, uh, which holds the commercial linkage fee constant at our current rates. So that third column here shows a maximum impact fee amount of just over $6 million with the increase over current levels attributable to a new park impact fee that's assessed on this type of project and an increase in the transportation improvement fee. And then finally, this is our last prototype we looked at. It's a 60,000 square foot hotel with 120 rooms. Uh, the same caveat apply here with regard to the commercial linkage fee. So this third column holds that that commercial linkage fee constant. Um, our current impact fee levels are one point, about 1.2 million dollars for this type of project. And the studies show the full cost to be just under $2 million. And that difference is primarily due to the addition of a transportation improvement fee based on the transportation demand driven by a hotel, uh, which we don't currently charge. And so that is all net new in terms of a fee um revenue. And then an increase in the sewer fees based on the updated capacity charges for hotels. And then on the final slide, before we get to questions for council, staff wanted to summarize some of the comments we've heard from the development community. Uh, we held a virtual meeting with several developers last month to discuss the high-level findings of the studies. And much of the feedback and comments fell into the three buckets that are indicated here. So first, there were questions about the timing of the change to the new fee amounts and which projects would be allowed to pay current rates versus revised rates. Um, there were also concerns raised about how these fee increases might impact housing production, particularly multifamily housing and affordable housing. Uh, and then finally, there was a desire to ensure the new fees were in line with surrounding jurisdictions and feasible uh for new development in San Mateo, which is why we provided such a detailed look at the prototype projects and the fee comparisons across jurisdictions tonight. Uh, and then our final slide provides some guiding questions for tonight's discussion. Uh, so first, is is council comfortable with the proposed changes to park impact childcare and sewer fees? Second, does council wish to subsidize any of the fees in the study presented tonight? And if the city council wants to explore the idea of subsidizing fees for certain classes of development, uh, the city attorney's office will research and will will research that in return uh with additional information at a future date. Third, when would council like the changes to go into effect and how should they apply to projects currently in the pipeline? And then finally, does council have any additional direction or concerns with the information presented tonight or in the nexus studies as part of the staff report? So this concludes staff presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions from council.
Thank you, Brian. I'll bring it back to council, and it looks like we have a question from council member Lee.
Thank you, Brian. I have a question about um it the idea of subsidizing any of these fees. Um, is there any legal obligation to backfill subsidies through our general fund?
I think I will defer to to Gabrielle and Dorfisana for that question.
Hi, this is Gabrielle Whelan, Assistant City Attorney. And um, so the the rule is that when um the city is opting to charge less than the um maximum warranted amount of the fee, um, that the city does backfill that amount. And um, it can be done either with general fund money or with um grant funding or any other funding source that is available to the city.
Okay. And is that the case um when credits are applied or exemptions are are issued?
Um, the the theory behind the credit is that um the project is supplying um the infrastructure that would have been funded with the fee um instead of paying the fee. And so like the um housing projects get credits against the park fee if they're providing workout spaces or barbecue areas or playgrounds. And um, so that addresses the credit. And then I think you asked about something aside from credit.
Yeah, so there's also a scenario where we we could have criteria that for exemptions?
Oh, um, yeah, if the project is not providing an amenity that takes care of its um contribution toward the necessary infrastructure, um, an exemption would be made up out of another funding source. Um, and the reason for that is going back to the Mitigation Fee Act that Brian mentioned. Um, it requires that developments pay their fair share. And so what they're paying needs to be attributed to what their impacts are on the need for the infrastructure. And so um, an exemption, you know, typically wouldn't be um related to a project having less impact. Um, it would be a policy decision. And um, and so the city has to guard to make sure that all different types of development are paying their fair share toward the infrastructure that they're creating the need for. Does that answer your question?
It does. That's not the answer I was hoping for. Um, I guess I I just have one other long shot question then. Is it, is there a a structure that could be entertained where, for example, let's say, for example, um, we take a look at um the childcare impact fee applying to residential um projects? Uh, is there some way that we could exempt affordable units from those calculations for impact? So that we're not disincentivizing um affordable housing production?
Yeah, I mean, our office will study it in more depth, but the, you know, the basic concept is um, you pay a fee based on your contribution to the need for the improvement. And so um, you know, does, it seems unlikely that an affordable project would create less need for childcare than a market rate project. Um, but it's absolutely like the city council's policy call if they want to subsidize the the childcare fee. But if if that's an avenue that the city council is interested in exploring, you know, our office would take a detailed look at that.
And but any subsidy you're saying would require some financial outlay?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I have a a question. I just want to make sure I'm understanding all the the terms. So when we're saying like the full cost, that is basically our best estimate on what the cost of the impacts that that development is going to be creating. Um, so I guess when I think of sub the the word subsidy, I think of if we are not charging that full cost, then it's going to be a subsidy. What I'm not understanding was, I thought I understood it until council member Lee's question when we're talking about a cash outlay. Um, so I I feel like I'm missing something that I'm just not not understanding. So if we charge less, let's say we think that that we're, there's going to be $10,000 in impact and we we somehow get 8,000. Um, that 2,000 difference that we're not collecting, I mean, at least I think of that as a as a public subsidy. But would we have to backfill that with, is that what the question council member Lee was was talking about?
Well, you're right. There's one aspect of it that I didn't get to, which is it's also about timing. And so um sometimes cities will say, well, we're not in a rush to build the improvements, so we'll take longer to collect the money that's necessary for the improvement. But in most cases, if a city is not charging the full warranted amount, the city is contributing that out of another funding source.
And that's and that's a legal obligation? Or is that just just how the how economics works?
And that's that how that's how it works out in practice. And what the legal obligation stems from requirement of everybody's paying their fair share. And so the legal, the city would be on solid legal ground if it could demonstrate that all different types of development were paying their fair share and no more than their fair share. And and what you want to avoid is a situation where one type of development is paying more than its fair share because another type is not.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks. All right. If I am not seeing any more hands, um, then I'd like to open up a public comment and see if anybody. We're not having very vocal.
I have one hand raised. And that is uh Ken Bush.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So my name is Ken Bush. I'm with the Sarus Regis Group. I I submitted um a letter. We are a local developer that develops multifamily housing in San in San Mateo and San Clara. We're actually in San Mateo. We have completed a number of communities, both 888, San Mateo Drive and Humboldt Square within the city. Um, we've been working on one project, Haywood Park at the Caltrain um, train station at the Haywood Park Station um for the last six years. We spent a significant amount of time and money to um both design title and work on through the entitlements of the project and completing a number of studies. We've also gone through a number of meetings, both with the city staff and community development as we were designing the project. And two years ago, in 2019, we actually submitted it. We had neighbor meetings, we had a study session, and we were getting set to resubmit it last year in April, and then COVID hit. And you know, that's obviously had a pretty big impact and delayed us. So we um, we've just recently resubmitted last month um, our application to um to move the project along. And we are working to move the project along. If the, you know, this, our community is 189 um home apartments. And you know, when I look at the chart that was represented, you know, that would be one and a half to 3.1 million dollar additional cost if these fees were to go to that maximum amount, which you know, would have a fair, a very significant impact uh on the on the project itself. So, you know, what I'm asking and what we, what I asked in my in the letter was to grandfather projects in that have a pre-application or ideally would be any project that you know has spent some time in that process. The other, I did mention in the letter and what I've seen, we've seen other cities do if they wanted to encourage development within a small, a shorter period is to push that time period out a little bit so that people know when that date will be and that's certain, so that they then work to um bring their project along and that's a fact for them. So I wanted to thank the council for that, for the consideration. Uh, I wanted to bring this up. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Preston O'Connell.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Well, I know you have a full agenda, so I'll keep this brief. Um, we've really appreciated the collaboration with city staff for the last few weeks as we uh got this information. Um, one of the things we wanted to say is very quickly, a few things. One is, um, we just got the kind of inputs and assumptions. And so it would be really helpful, there hasn't really been enough time to kind of digest how the results were landed upon. But if, um, similar to the process that the city took with the affordable housing um, change about 18 months ago, if we could at least have one or two stakeholder meetings to make sure that we can provide kind of thoughtful feedback and and review the the inputs and assumptions just to make sure that the the development fees um are equitable. We definitely don't mind paying our fair share. Um, and we're doing projects in San Mateo right now that are both residential and commercial. Um, we just want to make sure they're kind of thoughtfully arrived on and and don't have any unintended consequences. And so we just want to have that collaborative back and forth. Um, so just a little bit more time and maybe a couple of stakeholder meetings would go a very long way. And then the second part of what we wanted to say is that um it's really challenging for a project, as you probably heard from a couple of, a couple other of my peers in the development community, that if you already have a project that's ongoing, whether it's the pre-application stage or or later, um, to be to be impacted by a potential fee change. And so if there could be kind of an acknowledgement or grandfathering of that, it would be greatly appreciated to make sure those projects aren't derailed. Um, and to kind of a thoughtful phase in of these new fees so that people could underwrite them and anticipate them. Um, that's that's the scope of our comments. Really appreciate the time tonight. Thank you.
I have no other speakers.
Okay, it looks like we have no more public comments. So I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council and for more questions or comments.
I can start, Mr. Rea.
Please.
So um, yeah, I I'd like to respond to uh the items listed here, one through four. In terms of the uh level of comfortability with the proposed structural changes to the park impact or in lieu, uh, that's referring to, I think, the combining of the two and making one more comprehensive uh fee. And uh, it's it's basically simpler and uh more to the point and moves us along better to the place where we're going to be able to actually fund some projects. I want to, I want to comment that um I've been looking at the um Central Park Master Plan for, it seems like 20 years, but I know it's only about 10. And even that is a while. And the big hangup there seems to be that we don't have the money. So actually, collecting fees so that we can do that work is a true quality of life issue for all the people in the city um who use our parks a lot. Uh, in terms of the childcare uh impact and sewer fees, these are also things that, uh, especially the childcare impact fee, we need to be able to provide uh needed resources for childcare. Um, it it's uh not an industry where there's a lot of money, uh, lots of different economic pressures uh happening with parents and with providers. And I think that everything the city can do to help uh move that market along and provide the necessary childcare, it's important. And so um I support uh uh some improvement to that uh collection of that fee. Uh, the sewer fees also, I think that realistically, uh, where those services are required, as the law says, they should be paid by those who are receiving the benefit. Um, and we definitely cannot not properly treat sewer uh uh materials that are collected. So, and we can't have the sanitary sewer overflows, which we've had before in the past uh and have resulted in other uh bad outcomes for us where we had to pay money and we were um found uh to be uh out of compliance with state laws. Regarding number two, does the council want to subsidize any of the fees presented tonight? Well, um, to maintain fee structure aligned with peer jurisdictions. I see that in some areas we're below the average. In fact, it seems like in most areas, we're below the average in terms of the fees that were shown, I think, on charts, uh, 20 or 21. Um, and I would like to see us, and then other jurisdictions were way high and didn't really seem to uh um uh uh be much in line with um maybe the real costs. Because I saw that the real costs were somewhere between uh the average and some of those other highs. I would like to see us come closer to the average uh recovery um uh in terms of those fees. I don't really view not collecting some money as subsidizing because we can't, we we don't provide money to support services that we don't have. Um, so it's not like we're paying something. Uh, we just have not collected all that money. Now, do I think we need to move along with all these services? Yes, which is why I'm recommending uh that we collect some more money based on those needs that we saw in the stacks of different funds that were outlined on those charts. Um, uh, number three, I think that uh the changes, two things, um, changes that are going to impact uh developers um who are the leading edge of providing uh both multifamily residential, which is critical to our city right now. Uh, it's a huge need. We need the affordable housing. housing that comes with those developments. And we, we have a huge housing shortage, we have since, uh, I started working with the city on these things twenty years ago, and it existed then. So I would like to see that those projects which have actually submitted plans, uh, as the, um, pre-application plan, who have already done substantial work and spent money to get themselves to that point, and they have worked out and locked in some sort of agreements with those parties they're gonna do business with, I think those should be grandfathered in. They should be considered in the pipeline and allowed to move through with the fees that were in place when they submitted. But then, as the other fees that, that I previously spoke about increasing, um, uh, are going to be applied, uh, I think it would be a good idea to bring those in in phases. And in the stakeholder talks with the stakeholders, I think, you know, it would be good to try and decide on a schedule for phasing in those, uh, additional fees that need to be paid. And I think those are my comments. The NEXIS studies are, um, a great thing. We need them. They're important. I'm glad we've done them. And, uh, we need to stay current with them in terms of the per square foot, uh, commercial impact fee that we actually just established a few years ago. I think we're, uh, good there, and I would suggest we maintain that level at this time, not increase it. And then, uh, the additional fees that would come on top of that should be, like I said, phased in and/or locked in at the time of submission of pre-application. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you for this presentation so thorough. I just have one more clarifying question. It, it seemed like you were suggesting that it would be a policy decision and within the council's discretion to set, um, the square foot threshold of when to apply the childcare impact fee. Did I understand that correctly?
So when that fee was first instituted, it was a council decision to set it at ten thousand square feet, so it applied to those projects above that threshold but not below?
Okay, right, but then, but you're saying that the NEXIS study shows, demonstrates, uh, impact for, for projects at all, at any level, right?
Exactly. There was no, there was no threshold in the, the NEXIS that we looked at, so the, the amounts that, that's showing are applicable to all square footages of projects.
Okay, so, so then, just to clarify again, what, are we saying that if we, if we continue the existing threshold at ten thousand square feet and above, would we then have to backfill the fees for those below the ten thousand square foot threshold?
Um, our office will look into that. I mean, the one thing we have to be sure to guard against is that the over ten thousand feet are not paying for the under ten thousand feet, under ten thousand square feet. That's, that's the main concern, is just to make sure that, um, the larger projects aren't subsidizing the smaller projects.
Right, so I mean, but kind of like based on the logic that was been used so far, it, it seems like it would, the, you know, if we're, if we're holding every project to pay their very, their fair share and, and all, all projects have impact, then we, the subsidy backfill would still be required. Is that, am I jumping too far to assume that?
And I think if the council, I think what we'd like to do tonight is find out if the council is interested in heading in that direction, and if the council is, um, then our office would like to work with Brian's group to flesh that out a bit more.
Okay. Okay, and, okay, so I'll just, I'll, does anyone have a question before I go through these? Okay.
Councilmember Papin has a question.
Yeah, thank you so much for letting me just get the questions in before we go. So, I thought we were doing some transportation impact fee and doing it more holistically with the general plan, but we're gonna do an interim one, and I don't see that in number one. Did I miss something?
Uh, it's not listed at number one just because it doesn't have a structural change associated with it. But, so, I, I can certainly add that here, uh, if you're comfortable with the, the fee amount changes with the TIF. The other three that are included here either were consolidation of two fees, um, or were charging something on different land use types that maybe weren't charged before.
I got it. I see the word. Okay, structural. And then one more, just to follow up on the childcare, and it is that we were considering going below ten thousand feet on the commercial, right? And then applying it across the board? Wasn't that what you had talked about?
That's what the NEXIS shows, is that the amount that is in the NEXIS study would be applicable to all projects regardless of size.
Okay, that's where I thought we were headed. Okay.
And residential and commercial? Correct?
Every correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, back to Councilmember Lee for your, your comments on these four questions, if you have.
Okay, so number one, yes, I'm comfortable. I, 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 as you can probably guess, I am, I am interested in, um, in exploring, uh, the opportunity and the, um, the budget impact and the, the legal, um, justification that we could make to set thresholds at different square foot, um, square foot levels. So I, I would like to have that on the table to be explored. Number two, um, I definitely am interested in subsidizing. I'm, um, concerned about, um, about our financial obligation to backfill and what the budget impact, impacts of that could be. So, um, with a, like, I would want a lot more study to be done, um, but I think it's worthwhile to, to explore it. And, um, I, I agree with Councilmember Bonia, or, sorry, Deputy Mayor Bonia, that, um, that we want to, um, not change the goalposts, um, in the middle of a game. We know that, um, the, there's significant costs associated with projects, um, even to get into pre-application phases. And, and it, it's, you know, to, on the one hand, ask developers to pay their fair share, um, yes, absolutely, and on the other hand, we, we can't change the rules, um, in the, in the middle of the game. So I, I definitely support grandfathering in. I would also propose that, you know, because of our arena goals, um, being, you know, top of mind, I would be interested in, in exploring a phased implementation approach, prioritizing commercial projects first and residential projects, um, later. So I would be, um, I would favor some sort of phasing of, of that kind to make sure that we're incentivizing, um, the development of housing first. And do we have any additional? No, I think I covered number four, too. Thank you.
Anybody that'd like to go next? Okay, I'll go next. Number one, I agree with staff. Number two, I mean, my thoughts on this is that we, we hired experts to, to look at the costs that, that each of these, these developments, uh, are gonna bring to our community if they're, they go through. There's a lot of benefits from, from these developments, but there are also costs, and somebody ultimately must pay these full impact costs. And if the developer doesn't pay them, then existing residents, taxpayers must eventually foot the bill. And, and I, I just don't think that's right or fair, and existing residents should especially not be, I think, subsidizing office space or market rate housing. So, so I would advocate for, for raising the developers' fees such that they cover the full impact costs, um, with, with the exception of perhaps subsidizing affordable housing. That's just kind of my take on it. I think that's, I think that's the right thing to do. I think it's irrelevant what other communities are doing. If they, if they want their taxpayers to subsidize office and things like that, that's fine, but you look at some communities, like, I, I think Belmont was one of them, and I looked at Millbury, and they're charging the full impact, so I think that we should, we should do the same. When, uh, let's see, so number three, uh, when would you like to, these changes to go into effect? I mean, I also think that it, we need to be fair. I don't like changing the, the rules in the middle of the game. But I do think it's important to keep in mind that every project that, that gets through that are not paying the, their full impacts, that means taxpayers are paying for those impacts, so, um, I, but I would, so therefore, I'm not in for, I'm not in favor of any phasing in effect. I think that we need to be fair with the projects that are already planned, but let's get these full impacts charging, uh, charge, just start charging for the full impacts as soon as possible, in my opinion. Does, uh, council have any direction or concerns with, uh, information presented? Nope, I don't have any. And thanks for the excellent presentation, Brian. And our friends at, what, Matrix or what was the name? Okay, um, who, anybody else? Uh, Councilmember Papin or Goldos? I'm not seeing hands raised, so.
I'll go next.
Okay, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Goldos.
So number one, yes.
I'm comfortable. Number two, uh, yes, and I think I agree with the previous comments about wanting to explore possibly subsidizing affordable housing projects. Number three, um, yes, I think it makes sense for projects that are, have been in the pipeline, especially for a long time, years, uh, for them to, uh, get grandfathered in, and so I'd like to see perhaps some more options on how to grandfather projects in that have been working diligently and perhaps were only delayed because of the pandemic. And number four, no, I have no concerns.
Thank you, and Councilmember Papin.
I guess that leaves a little on me. So yes, it's to number one, and I'll take you up on the transportation impact fee as well, and that's the raising there, so that kind of leads me to number two. I would look at some subsidies for, uh, affordable housing. I wish to be, um, have no alignment with our peers. I, I concur with the statements that were made that, um, we should be charging what it costs us, and that it isn't particularly equitable that our current residents would have to pick up the slack for new development. I concur that, uh, we should, um, grandfather in those that are in the pipeline. We have people that are working on these projects for a long time, uh, with financing partners that they have to coordinate with, and they've penciled out their projects to date, so I think that's fair. And, um, I'm not particularly inclined to phase in, especially when you talk about market rate housing, um, but I, I am concerned about those that have already gone in the pre-application process, and I don't have anything else for number four. And thank you very much. I spent some time with the NEXIS study. It was very, very interesting how you, you know, determine, I talked to you earlier today, Brian, and, you know, you based it on how, what type of unit, and how many people you think will be in each unit, and then how much it burns your infrastructure. It was very interesting, and I thank you for all the work that went into it. It, uh, it was well done.
Okay, uh, does anybody from city staff need anything else from us?
I think it might be helpful for me to just sort of run through a summary of what I think I heard. So it sounded like everyone was comfortable with the structural changes, at least for the, the consolidation of the park fees, the childcare impact and the sewer fees consolidating into a single capacity charge. At a minimum, it sounds like there is a desire to explore possibly subsidizing affordable housing, uh, with regard to, to what we are charging in terms of the development impact fees. I think, Councilmember Lee, you, you mentioned some additional possible subsidies for other land use types. Were there other things beyond affordable housing that you wanted us to, to look at in particular?
I, I'd say I share that top priority being affordable housing, and so I'm focusing there.
Okay. And then in terms of when council would like the changes to go into effect, it sounds like everyone is sort of in agreement that those projects that have been in the pipeline for a long period of time, um, should, should pay the current existing fees. And it sounds like that was largely those projects that are at the pre-application stage or later, so those who have submitted a pre-application or who have a complete pre-application would essentially pay, uh, the existing fees as opposed to the new fee. But I, I think that was generally the direction that I heard, the consensus there.
I think so.
Okay, I think, I think that we have what we need. Thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving right along. Are we okay? I just wanted to check in with everyone. It's nine o'clock. Does, are we, are we okay to keep moving forward? Great, all right. We will move on to new business item number twenty-five, ordinance introduction, wireless telecommunications facility in the public right of way, and we have Tracy to present to us. Welcome, Tracy.
Evening. Hold on one moment, I'll be sharing my screen. Can you see my screen okay?
Yep, looks great.
All right, great. So, uh, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Tracy Scramalia, and I'm the Senior Engineer in Public Works. I manage private development, right-of-way and permitting. Public Works staff worked with Barbara Choi and Stephanie Hall of Atchison, Barisone, and Kandadi. They were outside legal counsel for the city on the revisions to the code I'm presenting tonight. Barbara is in attendance and will be available for questions, uh, following my presentation. Uh, this evening, we are introducing an ordinance which is going to amend, uh, San Mateo Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point one zero, and then also we're gonna review proposed, uh, changes to our design standards and application requirements. So a little bit of, um, history on the timeline. So shortly after, um, the city council adopted its code and standards back in June two thousand eighteen, the FCC adopted its September twenty-sixth order regarding small cell wireless, uh, facility deployment. In January two thousand nineteen, the FCC order took effect, and in summary, it indicated that all city permits and authorizations for small cells placed on existing structures must be issued within sixty days and ninety days for all new structures. If the city does not meet these shock clocks, um, the city will not have, um, complied with federal law, and then we risk wireless carriers taking the position that the application's deemed approved. In October twenty twenty, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals affirmed most of the FCC's requirements, um, including the FCC shock clocks, um, but the court did reject the no more burdensome and objective requirements related to the aesthetic standards. So cities, so San Mateo, we can have a little more discretion with regards to, uh, aesthetic standards. Currently, the entitlement process for review and approval of small cells, um, ranges between ninety to a hundred and fifty days, which is well beyond what the FCC shock clocks dictate. Given the recent FCC order and the Ninth Circuit ruling, staff recommends changes, uh, to this, uh, Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point one zero, as well as the design standards, basically in order to provide a streamlined process and a comprehensive set of objective standards. Public Works presented the draft ordinance, uh, to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission at its April, uh, twenty twenty-one meeting. The main concern from the commissioners was in regards to changes to our neighborhood meetings. Uh, the proposed code, uh, removes the mandatory neighborhood meetings and replaces it with a voluntary meeting due to the shock, uh, clock limitations proposed by FCC. So the FCC order states that mandatory pre-application procedures and requirements do not toll the shock clock, um, and then the FCC encourages, uh, voluntary, uh, pre-application discussions. A required neighborhood meeting would be considered a pre-application requirement, and the sixty or ninety day shock clock would continue, and it could not be told. And since the FCC shock clocks are already a tight timeline for the city, it seemed that including the neighborhood meeting, uh, would use up valuable shock clock time. Uh, the commission also requested that the required notification to all residents within five hundred feet radius of the proposed small cell include other languages besides English as deemed appropriate by city staff, and that it be, um, included in the code as well and not just the design standards. With that, the Sustainability Infrastructure Commission ultimately made a recommendation to city council to approve the draft ordinance, um, and design standards that are appropriate this evening. So the key objectives, um, basically, there's, there's two key objectives to the code and the standard. Basically, there's there's two key objectives to the code and the standards update. The first is to streamline the approval process. This was done to in several ways. The first was to create one wireless permit. Currently, we have a minor and a major permit. So we deleted that, and we just replaced it with one wireless permit. So there's no need to have the two separate ones. The review and the approval is now at staff level. Previously, it was approved by the director level only. We also simplified the appeal process. We deleted the right for the protest to the director, and we replaced it with appeals going just to the SNI Commission with no further appeals to the city council. Applicant or persons noticed may appeal any decision to the SNI Commission. Previously, anybody could appeal, but now it's only limited to those that were in the noticing within 500 feet. And then the appeals now end with the SNI Commission and not the city council. And this is really in order to save valuable shot clock time. We also simplified the meetings and noticing. So as I mentioned before, the informational neighborhood meeting is now voluntary in order to streamline the process and meet the shot clock. Whereas previously, applicants were required to send a notice to residents in a residential zone only to request a meeting. If it was requested, the meeting was held. The voluntary meeting is recommended for any wireless permits in any zone. But again, it's voluntary. Notice of requirements, they have been specified. So within five days of submitting an application, the applicant is required to notice all property owners and residents within 500 foot radius and post near the site in three separate locations. The applicants are also required to provide proof of the notification prior to approval. Then, excuse me. And then lastly, the notice in regards to the public of the decision. So we were losing a lot of time in sending out a second notice with the the notice of the decision. So now city staff will be posting the approvals on the small cell webpage after the decision notice to the applicant. And then a second mailing is no longer required. It will have information on how to appeal if desired by anybody that was noticed. And then lastly, we really moved, we moved a lot of the siding and the design regulations from the code into the design standards. This is to allow the director to make any minor changes to keep up with all these constantly changing laws for the small cells. The next objective was really to create objective design standards. We did this by removing standard drawings from the appendix because the designs become very out become outdated very quickly. Now that objective standards, now we have objective standards to allow for variations in the designs in order to keep up with the emerging technologies. We included figures to show acceptable and unacceptable designs for each kind of small cell attachment allowed in the city, which currently we only allow for attachments to streetlights, to utility poles, and then new standalone poles. We've added a procedure table for each of these types of attachment that replaces the flow chart, which I got a lot of feedback was hard to follow. And then the procedures table is really broken into the pre-application, the application, appeals, building permit if required, and then the encroachment permit. So next steps, should the city council support the draft ordinance and take action to formally introduce tonight, Public Works staff will return at the July 19th meeting for city council to adopt the ordinance. And in addition to that, staff will be recommending adoption of the resolution to approve the design standards. Second would be to authorize the Director of Public Works to make any future revisions to the design standards as necessary. And then lastly, adopt an amended fee schedule for the permit and licensing fees associated with the administrative costs. Also, I just wanted to note, staff did receive the letters from Verizon and AT&amp;T, which you were which was sent to your attention earlier today. The letters refer to the proposed design standards. Staff will be reviewing and considering some of their concerns. But tonight, city council is not taking action on the design standards and is only considering the code revisions. The next council meeting, we would be asking for approval of the design standards for the resolution. And then we would also signify if any significant changes were made as a result of those two letters. So with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Tracy. I'll bring it back to council to see if we have any questions. All right, I'm not seeing any questions. Deputy Mayor Benia.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I guess I want to ask, I know that it seems as though all of the timelines for everything that has anything to do with this at all are indeed very short. It seems like there are actually, as a result of the court ruling and the changes in the law, the FCC has come across with quite a few very much more seemingly demanding kind of requirements. And so I have to, I guess I have to ask, this seems like something we I would have thought we would have had a study session on. And I want to know, is it because we don't have time for it?
Yeah, I mean, we did get noticed from Verizon, from their attorney in regards to us not being in compliance. So time was of the essence in getting this to go through and not having a study session. Also, we're we're amending it, amending the code. You know, we're not creating code like we did the first time when I came around, and I actually did a lot of study sessions where we create this chapter. Yeah, I have flashbacks too. But this time around, because we're just making amendments to it, a study session was not was not recommended.
Yeah, okay. Well, some significant changes, I think. For instance, did I hear correctly that the neighborhood meeting no longer required? It only happens if it's requested?
That is correct. Yeah, that is probably the most significant change.
That was a major issue a couple of years ago. So I'm kind of surprised by this. But thank you very much for reporting all this to us, Tracy.
Thank you.
I had a question back to the neighborhood meeting. I guess I share the the SNI Commission's concerns there. And I mean, I guess when it's when the meeting is requested, I mean, is it? Does that basically mean like a neighborhood meeting is never going to happen?
I mean, no, I don't believe so. I do think that the some of the telecoms, you know, they want to be part of the community, and they want to have a collaborative relationship with the city and its residents. Some of the other telecoms, not so much. So I do see some of the telecoms that are coming forward with applications will still have this voluntary meeting. But I certainly don't think that all all applicants will feel the same way about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I did want to just add that, you know, before we would send requests for the neighborhood meetings. So basically, we would send out a request only in a residential neighborhood. And then if somebody in that neighborhood requested it, the meeting was held. So and the since 2018, we've had about five such meetings out of over, you know, 40 applications that sent out the requests with, you know, dwindling numbers at these meetings. Even before the pandemic, it was pretty limited in the number of people that would attend. A lot of it was just people wanting questions. And that's why we beefed up the noticing and allowing for residents to ask questions and get their questions answered. Because a lot of the meetings were just really a Q and A between residents and the telecoms. And that's still going to occur. We're still going to have noticing, the requires send out noticing within five days. And then they have to log in any feedback they get from the public as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any more questions. I'd like to open up a public comment.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one hand up, Maureen Cruzen.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Rodriguez, Deputy Mayor Benia, council members and staff. I'm Maureen Cruzen with Verizon Wireless, and I'm here tonight just to thank staff for all of their hard work on this ordinance revision and for their willingness to hear and consider input from all stakeholders. Verizon's outside council has corresponded and spoken with staff to offer suggestions and clarify nuances of federal and state law. And we appreciate that opportunity as well as staff's efforts to balance the legal issues with the needs of the residents. Both Paul Albritton and I are available tonight to answer any questions you might have regarding small cells and the public right of way or our comments on the ordinance. And I also did just want to tag on to something that Tracy said about about whether there was or wasn't a community meeting, that there is still opportunity through the noticing process for residents to who have questions or who would just like more information or would like to find out what sort of input they can have. There is that opportunity for them to contact Verizon through our vendors and get information, you know, more specific details about the project and to ask any questions they would like to have an answer to. There is time and opportunity for that dialogue. And that is all I have, and I thank you for your time.
I have no other hands raised.
Thank you. I'll close a public comment and bring it back to council. I had a question for you, Tracy. In terms of other cities, we always go back to other cities when when we don't like our options, or at least I do. Are how are others are other cities just giving up the the neighborhood meeting? And are there any any other innovative ways they're trying to get that? Because it's not, it's a Q and A, but I think it's also important for the community to to have a place to say their opinions and invent sometimes. And so I guess what are their best practices here? Or is every single city having this exact conversation about like what's going to happen if there's no neighborhood meeting?
Yeah, I'd actually like to defer this to Barbara because she does work in a number of different cities throughout the Bay Area.
I'll just interject and yeah, if Barbara Choi, our outside council, can please answer that question, that would be great.
No, thank you. Good evening, I'm Barbara Choi, and I work at Atchison, Barisone and Kandadi. And I represent several cities related to small cell wireless and also the the cities that I've worked with, I've also asked the same question. Because, you know, I we all appreciate the need for community involvement, and the community is very interested in this issue. But unfortunately, because of the short time clocks, the shot clocks, that I think the cities that I've researched and the ones that I've worked with, we we've had to resort to making the voluntary meetings, neighborhood meetings voluntary and not mandatory because we just don't have the time to go through all the procedures and seek input and then move forward with actually reviewing and and processing the application. Because the shot clock starts from the time of the submission, and it also includes the time to review process and the appeal period. So that's what we had to expedite everything. So as the Verizon representative indicated, and as Tracy also detailed, the notices that do go out to the residents within 500 feet of the property project site, they have an opportunity to send in comments. And and the city mandates that the carrier provides verification that those notices went out, and then they also are required to provide copies of the comments that are received from the community. So unfortunately, that's the that's the actually creative solution that the cities have come up with. And also, in our in the design standards, we also encourage the carriers to meet with city staff prior to submission so that we can identify any concerns that the city might have before they even do the submission, because we have a short timeframe to respond once they submit.
Okay, thank you.
One question for that speaker, please. Ms. Choi, when you mentioned that the companies are required to report the questions that they receive from the public, you didn't say anything about whether or not they were required to provide copies or yeah, copies of their responses to the questions. Are they indeed required to provide copies of their responses to the questions?
If they're the carrier is not required to respond
Oh, really?
The comments from the public.
Okay, do we have any more comments, final comments? All right.
Actually, I just wanted to make one clarification is that when there is a failure to for a city to comply with the shot clock, there is no, it's not deemed, the application is not deemed approved, but rather there's a nuance. There's a presumption that the city effectively prohibited that application. So then the applicant could sue the city within 30 days and then establish the legal standard by which the court would find in favor of the carrier. So I just wanted to clarify that legal issue.
Okay, thank you. So I will entertain a motion now.
Well, I'd like to make a comment, please. And yeah, while I love my cellphone and my portable device as much as anyone else, I do have a kind of an issue with overbearing corporations. And and an FCC that clearly under some previous administrations has apparently run amok over the Polish desire to better understand and feel safer with this technology. And I don't know that those interests have really been met. So while I realize that this is something that that needs to be done because the technology does need to be improved. I mean, I've had my AT&amp;T phone here at my home where it really doesn't work. I have to use Wi-Fi phone at home because AT&amp;T is like one barely visible dot. You know, just and this has been for what 10 years since I've had a cellphone, right? So anyway, I hope they're going to improve service. Thank you.
Any other final comments or a motion? It's just a very unpopular motion to make, I know.
Yeah, I know. It seems that if I may, Mr. Mayor, I mean, it seems like our hands are tied a lot by the FCC, as our deputy mayor just pointed out. So I will make the motion with hands tied.
Your hand so you can do that?
Exactly, exactly. Who's going to second it with their hands tied?
I'll second.
Okay. Clerk, can you please call roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Papin?
Yeah.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gorthos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benia?
Yes.
And Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay. We are going to move on to new business item number 26, citywide communications informational update. And we have our communications manager Samantha Weigel.
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and members of the city council. Can you see my PowerPoint presentation okay?
Yep, looks great.
Okay, great. So I am Samantha Weigel, the city's communications manager, and here for an informational update on citywide communications. So just a brief overview of what we're going to cover tonight. We'll talk a little bit about the city's communication goals and priorities, the strategies and methods we're currently using. We're going to review the survey results of residents' communication preferences. And then we'll also talk about challenges and opportunities, particularly as it relates to accessibility. We'll review some census data on language barriers. And then we'll also talk a little bit about branding and consistency, and then have time for for public comment and council feedback. So, you know, one of the main reasons that I really enjoy working for the city is because I really do think that we prioritize civic engagement and communication. An effective communication is really about providing accurate, actionable, and timely information in formats that are readily accessible and appropriate for our audiences. You know, it's also really critical to building trust with our community, maintaining transparency, and of course promoting participation. So I do just want to note that tonight is meant to be, again, an overarching presentation about our citywide approach to communications. However, many larger initiatives often have their own project-specific communications or outreach plan. Overall, though, nearly all city communications generally have one or more of the following goals, usually to either be trying to build trust with our constituency, demonstrating the value that the city plays in the community's quality of life and the services we provide. Sometimes it's just purely educational, and other times we're seeking sort of engagement and informed participation. So we have 11 departments, nearly all of which are represented on our internal communications team that really works collaboratively across the entire organization. And as a diverse organization, you know, I do want to note that various departments often have differing communication needs. So for example, if we are, say, promoting Parks and Rec Summer Camp, that's going to be a very different message and approach than when we're necessarily alerting the public about, you know, a public works street repaving project in their neighborhood. So our strategy does need to vary based on our overall goal, but we do want to make sure that our approach with all communications addresses a few key questions. And that's often being really clear about what is our goal with our communication? What is or are our key messages? Who is our audience? And then what are the most effective methods or tactics that we have to reach them? And so late last year, we did sort of an internal communications audit of the various channels that we're using across the organization. And I am pleased to say that we really do have a very diverse toolkit of communications methods that we're drawing from. So everything from digital platforms, including websites, emails, social media, emergency alerts, traditional, you know, methods such as print materials, mailers, you know, partnering with news media, doing in-person outreach, and then also, of course, working with our trusted community partners. So next, we'll go through a couple examples of the work that we're currently doing. So again, our city website is really sort of our main city communication channel. And over the past year, we had about 1.3 million users that visited our website, and they looked at over 2.2 million webpages. Also, the vast majority of those who were frequenting our website are actually located in or directly around San Mateo. So we know that we're really reaching our residents and our neighbors. Some of the top pages over the last year, of course, are the homepage, our library page, our COVID web portal that we set up, our activity guide, and then, of course, the police department's main landing page as well. We're also using a variety of email platforms, and these are just a couple, just again, a couple examples of what we're doing. The library has a special email listserv that they use, and they have over 40,000 subscribers. Everyone who gets a library card is automatically signed up for their e-newsletter. The police department's Nixal account has about 64,000 subscribers who are receiving email notifications and text message alerts. Our community e-news has grown to over 9,500 subscribers. And then our Park and Rec has a rec track service where they have over 25,000 subscribers. Next, of course, very popular digital channel is social media. And, you know, like our other digital channels, this really is a very cost-effective way to release information, especially really time-sensitive information that we need to get out quickly. It also allows, of course, for more visuals and video content, things like that. We do have several accounts that are being used from various departments, including our main city pages, our police department, of course, is very active on social media, Parks and Rec, and then the library. And we're on, you know, most of the channels out there. We're on nextdoor.com, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube, of course. And then I thought I'd just pull out a couple stats for the city's main channels. You know, our audience is growing significantly and has been over the past few years. For example, on Facebook, it's one of our more popular channels. In 2017, we had about 1,400 followers. As of, oh, I guess about a week ago when I put this presentation together, we had over 8,000. So that's like a 561% growth over the past four years. We've seen very similar increases on Twitter and Instagram as well. So aside from social media, we do have a number of methods that we're using to conduct two-way communications with the public. So really, an opportunity for people to ask us questions and to get feedback from the community as well. And those include, of course, in-person workshops, which, as we know, were paused during the pandemic, but we do expect to pick back up as conditions allow. And that also are doing things like pop-up events and going out to the community and being at the places where people are naturally going or congregating to communicate and do some outreach with the community. We have done, you know, a lot over the past year. While the pandemic has, of course, been extremely challenging, we've really been able to leverage virtual forums, and we're, of course, hosting a variety of programs as well as events, this council meeting, of course, on virtual forums, you know, forums like Zoom. And then we are engaging the public with surveys. We use our Speak Up San Mateo platform, and then we are evaluating issuing more regularly statistically significant surveys as well. So print materials are, you know, a traditional and, but really key method for us to communicate with the community. Mailers are, of course, a great way to reach either a targeted or wide-ranging audience. I do just want to, you know, provide the caveat that there can be significant costs associated with printing and postage, but it is something that we definitely make use of throughout the organization. A few examples here are the recent general plan mailer that went out to all households. Our public works department has a relatively new construction noticing process, and we often include flyers in the recology bills that go out to customers quarterly, which is at no cost to the city and a great way for us to hit many households. And then we're using, you know, a variety of signs as well to make sure we're reaching, you know, people at ground-level communications. So things like A-frames and some of our changeable message boards that you'll see out throughout the city. And then, when budget allows, we do look at advertising in local publications, local, you know, print and digital publications, such as the Daily Journal. And then, of course, and I definitely cannot overstate this, we really do work very closely with our community partners to help amplify our city messages. So we're always looking for organizations that already have, you know, relationships with key constituency groups. For just a few examples, some of the nonprofits we'll work with is our Samaritan House, the Police Activities League, Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center, Peninsula Family Service, Self-Help for the Elderly, the Boys and Girls Club. We're working with the Chamber and the DSMA. And then, you know, of course, our partners in the news industry, and then our local schools and other government agencies, whether that's the local school districts or the county or Caltrain. We are always looking to collaborate with other agencies and other trusted community leaders to help get our message out to the community. So now I want to transition to looking at a little bit of data. And we, you know, issued our first citywide statistically significant survey back in 2020, which we reviewed, you know, at length. But I do want to talk about the specific community, or, I'm sorry, the communications sections. So if you recall, the survey was issued to more than 1,200 respondents. We were initially aiming for about 400 to 600 people to respond to make it statistically significant. We got a great response of 1,200. And overall, people reported, about 70% reported being satisfied with our city communications. I wanted to point out, though, some interesting tidbits are those who are most satisfied have lived here between one and four years, and those who were 65 years or older. But of course, there's room for improvement, and areas that we received a little lower marks were with residents who were a bit younger, about 18 to 24 years old, and also people who've been here less than a year. So maybe those who aren't as familiar with our organization and our services and our communications. And one of the, you know, key questions that we asked was, where are people receiving information about the city? So this isn't necessarily a review of our city communication channels, but how are they hearing about the work that we're doing? A few, you know, key takeaways from this as it relates to the demographics were, as perhaps expected, newspapers performed really well with people 55 years and older, but also with a younger generation of folks 18 to 24 years old. They also reported newspapers being one of their best sources of information about the city. Email and social media were top preferences for folks 35 to 54. And then city newsletters and direct mail performed really well across the board, pretty much from everyone about 25 years old to 55 years and older. And I think the main takeaway from this is the community gets their information from a really wide array of sources. So we need to make sure that our communication strategy incorporates both traditional and digital platforms. Another question that participants were asked was, what did they think were the most effective channels that we could use to reach them? And so by age, email performed well regardless of age, but it dropped off a little bit at 65 years and older. So, you know, we know that our 65 and older population, we're going to reach them probably in different methods than we do necessarily some of our younger population that prefers digital platforms like social media or email. And again, this just sort of emphasizes that we do have to use a variety of platforms, and we're always looking at ways to reach a diverse audience. And, you know, I think moving forward, this information also really helps us prioritize our resources. So I do think this is a great opportunity for us to continue looking at doing more direct mailers, doing things like increasing our email subscriber list and social media following, and of course, continuing to work closely with local news organizations. So now we're going to spend some time talking about, or reviewing some census data and talking about the languages spoken in the city of San Mateo. And the source of the information on this slide and the next two is from the 2019 American Community Survey Five-Year Estimates. I think we're all really anxious to see the results of the 2020 census, which we will know will come out later in the year. So we'll continue to look at the data as it presents itself. But what I want to focus on here is really the estimate of folks who not only speak a language other than English, but who have limited English proficiency, because those are really the people who are going to need translated materials or interpretation services. Spanish is the second most common language spoken in San Mateo. And of the more than 18,000 residents who speak Spanish, about 10,000 don't speak English very well, which is about 10% of our population, so a significant portion. Following Spanish-Chinese is the next most commonly spoken language, and then just a note, you know, the census does group Mandarin and Cantonese into this. And about 3,700 residents reported speaking Chinese and having limited English proficiency. And then after Chinese, the number of residents who speak another language and English less than very well was really spread across many other languages. So I think it's important for us to focus, you know, on these top two. We are able to see from the census information exactly where folks who have limited English proficiency are residing. So this is a map that shows the percentage of the population in a given census tract that speaks Spanish and English less than very well. And as you can see, our Spanish speakers do tend to be more concentrated in the North Shoreview and North Central neighborhoods. And this really does allow us to be more thoughtful and, I think, targeted in our approach. So for example, if we want to, you know, utilize more mailers that are being sent to the home, instead of doing a bilingual mailer that would reach the entire city, which is, you know, quite costly, we know we can target our approach to these neighborhoods where we tend to have higher concentrations of people with limited English proficiency. Another thing that we've, you know, really seen us do during the past year in collaboration with the county is being really thoughtful and targeted about some of our in-person and flyering that we were doing in certain neighborhoods as it relates to the availability of COVID-19 testing and vaccine. And then if we have a project that we know is going to significantly impact, you know, one of these neighborhoods, we're always looking to provide interpretation services. I know the Public Works Department has really prioritized having that available as part of their ongoing Peninsula Avenue Interchange Project that does significantly impact this area. So this is a map showing the total number of people, and again, these are estimates, but not a percentage, but the total number, estimated number of people who speak Chinese and have limited English proficiency. And then, you know, I was encouraged to remind myself and you guys that we do kind of want to take this with a grain of salt, just because the actual numbers are already low, these are considered just estimates, so there could be a decent margin of error. But again, we're going to look toward the upcoming census data that's going to be released later this year for a little more accurate information. But as you can see, Chinese speakers do tend to be a little more dispersed throughout the city, but they do, based on this, have a slightly higher concentration in a couple neighborhoods, including Hacienda and the Lake Shore neighborhoods. So, you know, what are we doing to make sure that we're reducing language barriers in our communications? These are just a few examples of some of the multilingual communications that we've been distributing. You know, accessibility and definitely overcoming those barriers is a huge priority, but we do need to think critically about how we can prioritize resources, especially when it comes to life safety issues, critical services, and resources or assistance programs. So over the last few years, and again, especially during the pandemic, we really did increase our translation and interpretation in our communications. We put together at the start of the pandemic a resource guide that we distributed to some of our day labor community. Our police department has hosted a Spanish episode of the Real Talk San Mateo series. And then, of course, we again continue to work closely with the county on COVID-related vaccination outreach and communications. Our parks and library departments also offer a number of resources and programs in multiple languages, particularly in Spanish. And we're really looking to leverage, again, those trusted community messengers, so the nonprofits that I mentioned earlier, that have close ties with some of our Spanish-speaking residents. And, you know, candidly, there's absolutely always more that we can do, and I will acknowledge that I think we have room to grow and improve in this area, but we are trying to be thoughtful about how we can be, you know, efficient and targeted with our limited resources. And not, you know, obviously pictured here, but another thing that we've been doing recently are, I know, our Public Works Department has set up a Spanish phone line where the people can get assistance in Spanish or make complaints. And then, of course, aside from language barriers, excuse me, jumped ahead a little bit, aside from language barriers, we are also working to be more accessible regardless of the barrier. And so, of course, you know, our clerk's office also recently implemented post-captioning in our public meetings, and I know our police department has been doing some more targeted work for, to communicate with folks with disabilities. So again, you know, there's definitely a range of barriers to communicating with and engaging the public. And we all know this, a lot of people are just extremely busy and may not feel like they have the bandwidth to get involved with the city until there's a really pressing issue that affects them directly. So I do just want to acknowledge that we're mindful of those barriers. Of course, there's also economic and cultural barriers. Some people really may not feel like their input is valued, and that is definitely something that we want to work to overcome. And a lot of that has to do with how we're messaging certain issues. And then there's a variety of things that affect someone's level of interest. You know, we're lucky to have a lot of folks who are extremely engaged. We see them at a lot of our meetings and events, and that's fabulous. But we know there's a whole range of other people that we're not hearing from very often. That could be, you know, in part because maybe they're new to the city and they're not as aware of what we do. But, you know, I think we also just need to be honest with ourselves that there might be some folks who are just, you know, for their own reasons, disinterested. But regardless of what those barriers are, we really do want to work to overcome them. And I think we do that by prioritizing effective communications and really, at a minimum, striving to at least inform people about the issues that we're working on, the services that we provide, and then, of course, there are opportunities to engage or get involved. And then, at a certain point, we do need the public and our community to really opt in and choose to participate and engage with us. And then, just really briefly, I wanted to touch on, you know, branding and consistency. While we are a very diverse organization, we do want to have a clear brand and to provide a consistent unified voice in our communications. I think this helps not only demonstrate our professionalism, it also helps our audience to be able to recognize official to be able to recognize official city communications, and it does really lend itself to instilling trust with our residents and our community. Just a couple of quick things we've done recently, you know, branded email signatures, PowerPoint templates, virtual backgrounds. I don't know about you guys, but I didn't think I'd be working, you know, to create a variety of virtual backgrounds and that we'd all be in these virtual formats for so long. And then, of course, public meeting email templates, as you can see below. And then we recently cleaned up our main city logo, and we're encouraging more departments to use our main city logo. So, you know, sort of in summary, we are reaching tens of thousands of residents on a weekly basis with our communications, and I think that's something to really be proud of. Departments are active on multiple platforms, and we do have a wide-ranging toolkit of communications methods that we use. But of course, there's always room for improvement. We definitely will continue to increase our digital audiences for things like social media followers and email subscribers. I think we're going to look more closely at expanding the use of direct mailers. We haven't done just a kind of general citywide one in quite some time. I, you know, again, want to acknowledge this is something that has a, you know, a significant cost associated with it, but I do think it's worth it, especially after hearing from a lot of residents that this is a great way for us to reach people and because we can do some more targeted bilingual messaging that way as well. And then moving forward, we really do want to, you know, use data and be more intentional about how we are working to overcome some of our language barriers. You know, doing things like translating more materials into multiple languages, having interpreters, and then, of course, making sure we're encouraging people to come to those meetings, even if they do need language translation services. And then one other thing that I would like to do moving forward is really kind of formalize our citywide approach by developing a citywide communications plan and potentially a branding book. So with that, I am happy to take any questions and of, you know, of course eager to hear your feedback.
Thank you, Samantha. Do we have questions? Councilmember Gothols.
Samantha, thank you for that overview. It was overwhelming. I'm just so impressed with everything you're doing and you're crushing the communications game on the peninsula. And I think so many cities are trying to emulate what you're doing. So I appreciate you for setting the tone here. On a lighter note, I still need you to help me set up my email signature, but other than that, I desperately need help. Thank you for everything you're doing. I just, that was a fantastic, impressive presentation.
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Gothols, and I'd be more than happy to help you set up your email signature. And I'm glad to see we all got the virtual backgrounds on now.
Any other questions? Looks like we have public comment waiting, so Councilmember Burley.
Thank you so much, Samantha. This is such a valuable presentation for us, you know, and also I think the public. And I think there are a lot of elements in terms of the overarching strategy that were really resonating and reflecting the desire of the community to see us working closely with community partners. And so to see that as like a key bullet point in our strategy is very satisfying. I, you know, I have a strong desire to see significant improvements in our language accessibility. And I was wondering if you could, you know, shed some light right now, you know, where are we in terms of the existing guidelines that we have? When, how, when and how do we make decisions about what gets translated and what doesn't?
So that's a great question, Councilmember Burley, and I really do appreciate, you know, your acknowledgement of how important it is for us to be strategic when we're making these decisions and thoughtful about it, and then, of course, working with our community partners as well. Currently, I will say that it has varied a bit based on department. I think there's an increasing understanding of the need to be strategic in when we're translating materials. So as I mentioned, sort of if it's an issue that we know is directly affecting a certain neighborhood, if it involves any urgent need or action that we need the community to take to protect themselves, and then also if it's a resource or service that we believe will support community members who maybe have a limited English proficiency or that they'd be interested in. I, you know, again, think this is something that we can definitely improve upon and take up, you know, in our internal communications team to talk through what exactly is everyone doing and when are those decisions being made. And quite frankly, what I've been seeing the past year alone, people are now leaning more toward translated materials regardless if they think, not regardless if they think there's a need, but they're leaning more toward spending a little more time and resources to have that information accessible. So hiring interpreters for a lot of our workshops and public meetings, having more information translated. I think too, if there's ever a need that you see or hear out in the community, we definitely want to hear about that. You guys are often sort of the first point of contact for a lot of residents in interfacing with the community. So we're eager to hear from you guys too, if you think there's a need or something that we're missing.
And thank you for that. I will save my comments for later, but I also have another question in terms of the way that we engage interpretation services and how are we managing that contracts? Has the city explored combining RFPs or sort of combining forces with other cities to get some efficiencies of scale? Looking to, for example, the county, which is, I think, an exemplary model, especially during COVID, of how to do multilingual outreach and engagement. They have, you know, they have an RFP out there that's in use that we could look to. And there are other cities with large populations similar to ours in terms of language needs that we could potentially be combining with to negotiate more cost-effective contracts.
Yeah, I think that's a really great point. I know, you know, and candidly, this was a few years back and a little bit before my time, but I know there was an interest to have a, I can't recall if it was an MOU, but with some of our neighboring jurisdictions, especially for emergency communications. And I think that one thing I've heard in discussing this with some of my colleagues in other departments, currently our budget for this and also the contractors that we're using do vary by department, and it's not quite centralized. But there's definitely an interest in having a cost-effective, reliable translation and interpretation service to work with. You know, I think as it relates to Spanish especially, we have a few people that we know are really reliable, and depending on what we need to have translated, if it's something very technical, we're going to want to go with someone that we know has experience in, you know, translating something like the minimum wage requirement that we have versus if we're doing something a little bit lighter, we might go with someone that doesn't necessarily have that level of interpretation skills. So that's a long-winded way of saying I will absolutely connect with my colleagues at the county to see what they're doing in the current RFP that they have out and the services that you're using, they're using, and see how we can, you know, look to hire more of a single contractor for some of those services.
Great. And my last question is about, as looking across different neighborhoods and sort of, you know, making sure that there's touchpoints, you know, broadly across, you know, the entire city, do you feel like there are gaps in sort of outreach to specific neighborhoods or regions of the city that are on your radar? And what, you know, what is sort of, you know, have you seen models out there that you feel like might be beneficial for us to consider?
You know, that's a really great question. I think we, again, depending on what we're communicating about, are always looking to engage sort of some of those neighborhood leaders or if it's an issue, again, that is directly impacting one specific neighborhood, we're very embedded in that community and reaching out to them directly. You know, we do rely somewhat heavily on some of our active neighborhood and homeowner association groups to help spread the word. And that way, I think there's a variety of models that different cities use, some of which maybe didn't have as clearly defined neighborhood groups as we do. But, you know, I think there will continue to be an interest and an effort to look at how we can fill gaps that we see. And quite frankly, we usually become aware of them only while we're in the midst of communicating and start to realize we're not hearing from a certain segment. So I know, you know, you guys had a long discussion about the general plan recently, and that's definitely something that they're working on and that we're going to continue to learn from that process and apply throughout the entire organization, our communication efforts.
So, I mean, so more specifically, do you, like, we know that there are gaps in engagement east of 101, right? Is that in the general plan processes, would you say that that's somewhat consistent with your data metrics across, you know, the citywide communication strategy?
You know, the general plan is really its own beast. I think that we do tend to see more engagement, particularly from those areas, when it's an issue that's directly affecting them. So we have heard like from our police department and some from some of our public folks in Public Works, that if it's an issue about, you know, traffic or parking, they tend to be much more engaged than if we're, you know, talking about something like, you know, a new council policy on fees or something like that. So I think there's definitely room for improvement, and I do think that the general plan team is looking very closely at that, and we're working closely with folks in that community. And we will be applying those lessons that are being learned and developed. And I do think that in the coming year, there's going to be a lot of work to help expand, you know, folks being involved from that area of town. But we really are, we really, really do want to hear from, and we really want to, again, instill the idea that their input matters, so.
Thank you.
More questions? Councilmember Pappen.
Hi, Samantha. So my question relates to overlapping with the schools and busy parents and this idea of promoting community engagement, which really is at the core of what you do, and it's so noble and so near and dear to my heart. But I'm wondering if we can't get some more overlap, or what has been the response with these community partners, as it were, lack of partners?
That's a great question, Councilmember Pappen. So I want to really actually emphasize our local school districts, particularly San Mateo, Foster City, and then, of course, San Mateo United have been extremely responsive. They have communications leads for both of those districts, and depending on what we're working on together, we'll often cross-promote certain, you know, events. We're frequently asking them to, you know, share our messaging on their own channels, whether that's through their email lists that they have or through social media. If there's, you know, an issue that we want to especially hear from more youth on, we'll sometimes ask if there's a teacher or a classroom that might be interested in learning about something that we're doing. But you touched on a really important, you know, barrier that I mentioned earlier is people are really busy and sometimes they just don't have the bandwidth to spend as much time, you know, communicating with or engaging with us. And I think especially over the past year at least, the schools, of course, have had their own challenges with having to communicate just really, really evolving critical information. But I have a couple, you know, counterparts at both of the school districts, and we're in close collaboration.
Okay, let's say for questions, and I'd like to open up a public comment.
Yes, we have one speaker, George.
Hi, Sam. A question for you. I love what you're doing and all the different formats you're trying to get this information out of. Would you ever consider having like an official account on like Reddit? Because I would love to see an official account on the subreddit of San Mateo, which has at the moment just a hair over 2,000 people. And it's a smaller account to the subreddit of the Bay Area. So when you can start, which, oh, actually, the subreddit of Bay Area has about 300,000 people in it. And so when you can start engaging with an actual account, you get more and more just exposure. I'm just curious if that's potentially a route you guys would take.
Okay, I think that's our last speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, we have one more.
Hello, good evening there. So thank you for this presentation. I appreciate it. And I wanted to acknowledge a variety of things. One is some of the things I really appreciate, the communication that's being done, I think, just phenomenal. So I think the meeting notices for like officials, city council, the Parks and Rec, Public Works, sustainability, those kind of meetings, that whole thing works really well for email. And I think the police is nixal on how they manage that. So I get a text message if it's really like a crisis, but they use the email. And I need to preface, like, I'm not on social media, I have no desire to get on social media. So I appreciate like email, it doesn't need to be fancy, and so it doesn't, and so that's a flip side of where like I'm struggling to not, I'm not getting noticed on certain meetings because it's only being published on social media or Nextdoor. And even a basic email that just says, hey, we just published something to Nextdoor with a link, that's fine, I don't need it fancy, but I am struggling on that. I've almost missed, and I have missed some public work type events because of that. So, but I really appreciate the other stuff, that it's really working well. That's something I really appreciate, and I also appreciate that the focus has moved beyond just Spanish. It's, I think Spanish is great, I love that, but it's also we're more than just Spanish in so many different ways, from various Chinese-type languages to, you know, American Sign Language, just all that kind of stuff. So, and then I try to keep moving really fast here. So one thing I heard was a little bit how to keep people engaged, and I, in my little world that I interact, I think there's kind of two themes. One, I think, don't assume that the neighborhood associations actually reach people. In certain neighborhoods, that's the case, and other neighborhoods, that's not the case. In my neighborhood where I live, I don't, no one's ever talked to me and my neighbors about the Neighborhood Association as a method of getting information and stuff, even though there is one over our region, so to speak. And the other is, I know some people, they, because I've seen so many good things with some of my interactions, I'll say, no, things aren't like that. And they're like, they'll cite an experience where they've had a bad experience with the city. And that's hard to overcome, to tell them it's not the case, or there's new people in this situation. And I do think there's room for the city to work that directly by, I think, a couple examples are telling someone specifically, or in some of the things that are done is how public comments specifically change something counter to what maybe the city was thinking they were going to do. And so how someone's comments really changed it and not just, well, that comment was kind of a checkbox, we were waiting for someone to say it, they said it, so public comment fulfilled what we wanted them to say. Or, yeah, I think something around both those things are good. And I love branding and stuff, I just would say like with the slides, let's not, I drove recently on 28th Avenue Bike Boulevard, hadn't biked it yet, and I feel like the branding sign, the top half of the sign is way too big relative to the rest of the sign. So like conceptually, it got inverse the information and stuff. So I think I'm beyond my three minutes. Thank you for the extra thing. I really appreciate so many great things that are happening, and thank you.
We have no other speakers.
Thank you. I'll close public comment and bring it back to City Council for final comments. Councilmember Pappen.
Well, I just want to thank you, Samantha, because there have been two things that you've really had to marshal here. One is method of communicating, and then there's content. And both have been done extremely well. And for me, the content, the newsletter in particular, I think, is just outstanding because you give me bullet points at the top, so I don't have to read all the way through to find out what's in there, so I appreciate that. And then, you know, everything has a heading, I can plow through it quickly, and I really think that the way that that is done has been just remarkable in how it has engaged our community. And so many people that I know that didn't used to know what was going on will come up and approach me and say, oh, I read about X, and what are you guys going to do about it? And what are you guys going to do about it? Have you decided yet? You know, sort of thing, so it really does cause engagement with, with myself as an elected. And um, I, I couldn't be more proud of the job you've done, well done.
Uh, thank you, uh, I don't know who's next, uh, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you so much Samantha, I um, I, I hope you know how much I appreciate um and respect you as a professional, and I can see, you know, the. The engagement and the effort um and the, the thinking that's gone into the, you know, the work that you do and, and how much progress we've clearly made. Uh, and so I also, you know, I also feel like we can't miss an opportunity here to continue to elevate. And um, and where I see some of the most critical needs is um, is in the language access piece. And um, and I'll, I'll just share a story, you know, when I was on the campaign trail, I, I spent a lot of time talking to people in my terrible Spanish. And my Chinese, my broken Chinese, and um, and I had the one opportunity to um, to meet with uh, you know, I think it was. Twelve or fifteen Chinese seniors and, and do a presentation to them in Chinese. And um, and all of them lived in, in San Mateo for many years, and not one of them have ever heard about um, the, the get around program. The senior ride share program. And um, and when I was very proud to approve continued funding for this program tonight. Um, and you know, when I was on Parks and Rec and, you know, wanting to shepherd this program again, and even, you know, consider increasing funding. Um, and was watching this, this uh, the program sort of evolve to what it's become today. Uh, many, you know, years ago, I was saying. I'm concerned that the, the application for a sub- the subsidized program is not being offered in language. And, and today that is still the case in Chinese. And so when I think about, you know, where we see uh, the, 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 the priority today. Is really focusing in on where, where are we asking community members, or where are we offering essential services? And subsidized services and making sure that, that um, that there, we're, we're providing real access. To those services across the two key languages um, in Chinese and Spanish. So that to me is, you know, is something that I really hope that we can put some resources to. Um, I, I, and I, and you know, and I went above and uh, in, in, in my own time, translated the application. But um, and ran into some walls because it couldn't be processed. So uh, you know, the, these are the, these are my, my personal experiences. Um, confronting language barriers inside the system, um, you know, and, and so the, the barriers are very real. And um, and they are preventing people from accessing services that um, that everyone should be eligible for and entitled to use. So I, it is, it is, you know, truly um, an issue that, that I, I really hope that we can. We can um, put front and sw- center. Um, and, and I think that there's a, you know, I'm really encouraged to hear your willingness to, to revisit that opportunity to consolidate. Um, contracts uh, you know, across the region or with partner cities. And, and look to the models that are out there. Um, because I think that there is a better, more efficient way to do this. Um. Yeah, so, yeah, so in just, I think, you know, if I'm being really, really clear, I want to make sure I'm being really clear about where, where I stand. Um, you know, when we're asking people to, to engage in, with city services in the forms of applications, when we're looking at, you know, subsidized programs. And um subsidized services, to me, that is the clear starting place. Um, in terms of where we should be putting resources for language access.
Uh, I heard you loud and clear, and I, I really do appreciate you sharing your experience. Um, you know, that's something that I'll definitely take back and not passing the buck, but definitely take back to our Parks and Rec. Department since they manage the program, and I'm, I'm not as familiar with the potential um, sort of behind the scenes. Challenges that there might have been with interpretation and, and really the service, because if I recall correctly, I, I don't think it's the city necessarily that provides the rides, but. Well, um, you know, like you said, it's, it's easy enough to translate a flyer, but making sure that we have everything lined up in the backend to. Actually provide the service is a, a different question, but absolutely something that we will. Look into, and then especially moving forward when it relates to services and programs. Um, anything subsidized, you know, make sure that we're providing information and, and access. Um, regardless of uh, whether they speak Chinese or Spanish or English.
Thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor Benio.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Samantha, I want to thank you um, very much for a great report. Um, rather in-depth and detailed, and that's good because we've been kind of needing to hear that, I think, for a while. Um, and uh, the truth is that, as you said, there are some hard to reach customers out there. Uh, for many different reasons. Um. And uh, I just want to though, say that we know that we have to reach these people, you're working on. Methods, uh, I'm encouraged that you talked about increased use of direct mailers, even though they cost somewhat. Uh, if they're translated and they reach the home, uh, I think they're a, a superior form to uh. Uh, for instance, social media, which I have to say, I have missed whole events. And not even know about them because that's the only way they were advertised. And uh, that actually kind of drove me to look at social media, which I generally don't do, but I did pick one that I now participate with. So that I learned some more things, but I always encourage people to, you know, I'm easily reachable by email. And I guess that's like snail mail now, I don't know. Um, but I want to say, um, I was touched when I heard um. Uh, um. Uh, George uh, from the market there asking about some other way that we can talk and um. The room for improvement that you mentioned, though we know you're doing a lot of things and you're putting in every ounce of effort you have. That there, there is yet, there always is. And so um, I want to encourage you to look for that, that improvement, but thank you very much for everything you do.
Okay, well, there's been a lot of high praise uh spoken tonight, I think it's very well deserved, I agree with it all, thank you so much for all that you and your team. Do for our city Samantha, especially given this, this past year where I think things have been extra hard and you've had a lot of pressure um, getting the messages out. Um, I think for me, uh, in addition to all the things that are mentioned, um, I, I just wanted to uh, put in a plug for your efforts to. To try to get the, the way I understood it is, is the kind of the San Mateo brand of all the different. Uh, departments, a, a little bit more cohesive, I know that they have different messages. And in goals, but I, but I do think, as you recognized, um, that it, it sometimes seems like. Like Public Works, it's its own entity, Parks and Recs, it's its own entity, and I think that, that over time, if we can bring them a little bit. Uh, closer together and to look and feel of, of how, of, of how the messaging looks, I think it would be, uh, I think our city would be better for it and. And there'd be some network effects, like, so when they get an email that's this certain look, they know it's from San Mateo, whether it's from Parks and Recs or from. Or from uh, Public Works, so, but that said, uh, thank you again so much, great presentation.
Thank you, and I, I really just want to give a huge shout out to all of you, because you guys have really enabled all of this to happen. With your support and your interest in civic engagement and communications, and thank you for all you guys do. Whether you're on social media, responding via email, or, or talking to people on the street, it definitely goes a long way, so, thank you.
Thanks Samantha. Okay, um, we're going to move on to the last item of the agenda, new business, item number twenty-seven, twenty twenty climate action plan annual progress report. And we have Andrea Chow, Sustainability Analyst, presenting to us.
Great, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Andrea Chow, and I'm the Sustainability Analyst with the city of San Mateo. Tonight, my presentation will go over our progress on the implementation of our city's climate action plan. The city's twenty twenty climate action plan was adopted last year, April sixth, twenty twenty. Uh, the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission was very involved in the development of this updated document. Uh, this document built upon the city's first climate action plan that was adopted in twenty fifteen. And it establishes new greenhouse gas emission targets for twenty thirty and twenty fifty. And then a suite of strategies and measures to meet these targets. So you might remember this graph, it depicts our community-wide greenhouse gas emissions in twenty seventeen. Uh, this inventory was done as part of our twenty twenty climate action plan update. And showed that we had made significant progress in meeting our GHG goals, and we actually hit and exceeded that twenty target. That twenty twenty target, so we were able to reduce our emissions by eighteen percent below our two thousand five baseline. And our target was fifteen percent. This graph also hopefully reminds you of where our emissions come from on, in our community. The majority of our emissions are from on-road transportation, so that includes all on-road vehicle trips on local roads and state highways. And then buildings also account for a large portion of our emissions. So included in the built environment are things like electricity and natural gas consumed in all residential, commercial, and industrial buildings. The climate action plan is organized uh, around nine greenhouse gas reduction strategy categories. These are building electrification, renewable energy, energy efficiency. Municipal energy efficiency, clean transportation fuels, sustainable transportation, solid waste. Water and wastewater, uh, and off-road equipment. Because I want to keep my presentation brief, over the next slides, I'll be highlighting just a few of these different measure categories and some of the progress we've made. Over the last year in these different areas. Starting with building electrification, this is actually a new greenhouse gas reduction category in this updated climate action plan. Building electrification, or the construction of all-electric buildings, refers to buildings that have no natural gas services. All-electric buildings rely on electric appliances and systems for space and water heating, clothes drying, cooking, and more. And by avoiding the use of natural gas to fossil fuel, an all-electric building has a much smaller carbon footprint. And the city council was very involved in the uh, development and then adoption of the city's first building electrification reach codes. So in twenty nineteen, the city adopted reach codes that encourage building electrification. By allowing for two options for new construction, either constructing an all-electric building. Or a mixed-fuel building that met higher efficiency standards than the state's requirements. So these building reach codes were in effect from January one, twenty twenty, through December thirty-first of twenty twenty, so for the ca- that calendar year. Uh, but it was later replaced by the reach codes that I'll show on the next slide. So then in twenty twenty, the city adopted a reach code requiring residential and office buildings be constructed all-electric. So instead of that two-pronged approach, the city made the new all-electric requirement. So I, looking forward, the following residential projects will be subject to the city's building electrification reach code. Reach code, so projects like Conquer Passage, nineteen nineteen O'Farrell, Peninsula Heights, et cetera. So we're estimating fifteen hundred new all-electric residential units building being built in San Mateo over the next years. I'm also very excited to highlight the city's municipal energy efficiency upgrades through PG&E's Sustainable Solutions Turnkey Program. This three million do- dollar project included lighting upgrades, HVAC upgrades, and a new building management system. At almost every city facility. So annually, the city will save one point eight million kilowatt hours in twenty-two thousand therms. I, I wanted to show a graph that the PG and, PG and E team had created to demonstrate. How our buildings are operating since these upgrades have been in place. So in blue is the twenty sixteen baseline, and in orange shows how the. All of the buildings included in the upgrades have been operating from January twenty twenty to uh, April of this year. And this graph shows uh, electricity. We're already seeing measurable savings in electricity, and our gas savings are on track making, meeting the modeled savings as well. Related to clean transportation fuels, I, I had some data in the uh. Agenda report showing how DMV data shows that electric vehicles and hybrid plug-in vehicles registered. And the city of San Mateo are trending upward. Uh, we know that by twenty thirty-five, all new cars being sold in California will have to be zero emission vehicles, we know this number is only going to grow. I think it's important to show that we are, the city is building the necessary electric vehicle infrastructure to continue to support the growth of electric vehicle charging. So this screenshot shows there are a hundred and thirty charging ports available throughout our community uh, to the public. Uh, notably, there was a new supercharger station at the Lower World Shopping Center. Uh, and at another uh, Bank of America site on El Camino near the Hillvale Shopping Center. And then on our own city-owned property, we are trying to make sure we have EV chargers available to our community. Staff recently applied for electric vehicle charging funding at a few our downtown garages, and we're currently negotiating. A contract to install uh, charging stations at our main street garage. Uh, and then I also wanted to, to highlight that, that the, what the city is doing in our fleet. The city operates two hundred and thirty-two vehicles, and currently fifty-nine of these vehicles are alternative fuels, so they're either hybrid CNG. Or electric, uh, but moving toward a fleet with more electrical, electric vehicles is already a, a city council priority, so that is something that we'll be working towards. Staff continue to prioritize increasing composting and multifamily. Uh, and are taking a number of different types of actions to reach directly to HOAs and property managers. And provide resources to encourage best practices in waste sorting. Uh, and then additionally, one very exciting uh, development over this year. Was the city council's adoption of the disposable food serviceware ordinance. That is modeled after the county's ordinance. So this ordinance will require food facilities to distribute disposable items that are fiber-based and compostable. And looking forward, this ordinance will go into effect October twenty twenty-two. So right now, we're using this time to transition and make sure that food facilities use up their existing stocks that might not. Comply with the, the ordinance. Uh, and then also working on a more voluntary campaign called Quit the Cuddery. That uh, restaurants can take this pledge to not distribute any extra condiments. Or utensils, or straws unless uh, accepted or requested by the customer. So the idea here is we're reducing the amount of disposables that are distributed that might not be needed. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd welcome any questions now.
Thank you Andrea, um. Do we have any questions from council members? Okay, uh, excellent presentation, by the way. Um, I'd like to open up a public comment.
I have no hands raised.
Like a closed public comment, and bring it back to city council for any comments or questions, Deputy Mayor Benio.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Andrea. Um, great job of reporting, a really, a lot of really good progress that we've made. Over uh, uh, recent years, um, and I know it doesn't come easy. Um, believe me, I know because I'm working at it all the time in many different ways, but. Um, it, it is an important struggle, and uh, we're meeting the challenge. Uh, and of course, a- as I said to Samantha earlier, there's always room for improvement, so. As long as we're all getting up in the morning and going. So as long as we're all getting up in the morning and going out there and learning what we need to learn and putting it all together to make even greater improvements in how we are working to reduce greenhouse gases and keep our planet livable, then I'm very happy. And I want to say that I appreciate the work that you're doing on this. Thank you very much.
Anybody else have any comments? Councilmember Lee.
I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. And I was really actually very gratifying to see some of the policy changes that we've made and to have the metrics for their sustainability and climate change impacts. And like, just, you know, side by side. And it makes it somewhat tangible, you know, from, you know, from the policy side of things. So I really appreciated the way that you put together the presentation and made it really concrete and digestible.
You know, I also wanted to thank you. And, you know, we here at San Mateo really like to think of ourselves as pushing the boundaries in terms of environmental leadership. And we're very lucky to have your service, your guidance, and your leadership helping us along the way. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to close this item. Wow, is that the last item? So we have reports and announcements. And before we kick things off, I know that following our new council member guidelines, Councilmember Lee would like to bring something forward for the council to consider. Take it away, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, everyone, for bearing with me at this late hour. And I wanted to share with everyone the sample letter that our neighbors in Redwood City sent to Governor Newsom encouraging the extension of the moratorium and sustained funding. And as a way of background, I think it's really important that we surface the facts that there is this, you know, huge pot of money that's available that's meant to address this looming need that is really scary, quite scary in terms of the potential impact to homelessness. And I just read an article by the Almanac News that showed that less than 1% of San Mateo County's rent relief money has been given out through the state program. So there's been a very serious and significant bottleneck in the implementation of this program. And we're facing a cliff in terms of when the moratorium will lift. So that could mean literally like a tsunami of evictions and potential homelessness. So it went on to say that the $47 million in rent relief funding that was available, less than 20 million has been requested. And only 314,000 has actually been distributed. That was a quote directly by our county manager. A survey recently showed that, a survey of small landlords revealed that 86% did not know about the program and 88% of tenants who had been unable to pay rent in full during the pandemic. And if you look at what 88% of tenants looks like, I mean, the estimates for households that are facing rent debt, the National Equity Atlas estimates it around 16,932. And Urban Footprint has it around 14,060. And the most recent reports by Urban Footprint showed that as of the 27th of last month, only 1,843 households had actually submitted an application, which left about 86.9% still at risk. So this is a very serious and pressing issue. And I think that we have a responsibility to urge the state to act. And that's what I hope we can do tonight. And perhaps it's bringing it forward to the Legislative Subcommittee or directly directing staff to write a letter on our behalf. So that is my update.
Prasanna, correct me if I'm wrong. Since that was not on the agenda, we can't act on it or even discuss it right now. But we can indicate that we would like to put it on a future agenda item for discussion. Am I understanding that correctly?
So I think you have different options here. Ordinarily, under the council guidelines, council members can request an item be placed on a future agenda, and then it is agendized at that point. What we did here is, you know, we actually placed the item on agenda already just so it could be discussed a little more length than would ordinarily be possible under the Brown Act. So I think your options are, if you wanted to, just given the timing and given the state budget coming forward relatively soon, I think if you wanted to informally direct staff to work on sending a letter, I think that would be fine. You could also, as Councilmember Lee mentioned, refer to the Legislative Subcommittee to quickly meet and work with staff on revising and preparing a letter to then send off to the state. So I think you have different options here. Hopefully, that's clear. But let me know if you have questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peppin, did you want to?
Yeah, so, I mean, for me, I support this legislation being handled at the state level because, as we've mentioned, there is an economic support that is a key accompaniment to it. You know, both tenants and landlords have been barely hanging on. And the state's life vote, I really think, has to be increased to 100%. Right now, it's only 80% of rental assistance. And the barriers to getting the money have just got to be removed. So the state has to make it easier to get this money. It is true, that 47 million has been allocated to our county, and very little recovered. So I would support this, that writing a letter. I think anything we can do to get folks the financial assistance they need, because if the banks come in and take over defaulting properties, it'll be very difficult for anyone to get reproved. I think we can also do better to get renters information about the permanent protections they have for rental arrears that have accrued during the pandemic. For example, if a renter was able to pay 25% of their rent during the pandemic, they can't be evicted for the failure to pay the 75% that they were unable to pay due to COVID. And if a landlord receives 80% of the past rent due under this program, you can't evict somebody for not paying 20% of it. So we've got a lot of protections out there, and I think we really need to be vigilant to make sure that we give people the tools, whether it's the financial tools or the information that they need. But I'm in favor of sending a letter of support that this be done at the state level along with the financial components to it. And the Redwood City letter referenced that, and so I would be okay with it.
Yes, me too.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Benioff.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with that statement also. I would like to go on and say that Redwood City actually did another thing. And they sent out this direct mailing, which we just heard from Samantha talking about tonight, very effective. And what it does is it went to, I believe, every rental household and all the landlords in Redwood City. I'm not sure exactly how they figured that out, but I spoke with Drew about it earlier. And he feels that we could figure out a way. It's just a simple, it's folded over. It's like one of the planning documents that comes to your house, postcard.
And did Redwood City pay for that, Rick? Did Redwood City pay, who paid for that, Redwood City?
The city paid for it, yeah. And I asked Drew, I asked Drew, he said he thought a mailing like this might cost $20,000. So anyway, I think the problem right now is that people just don't know. And that's what we've learned by asking the question. People just don't know. And so because of the looming January 30 termination of this program and the possible large number of evictions, I would ask if council might concur with me and ask our city manager to look into, and I plan to deliver this to him tomorrow so he can see the informations that's contained. And maybe just use it as some kind of a formatting bit of information. And certainly, we could write whatever we decide we want to write. But the basic information must be brought to people's doors. I think that clearly, people haven't been reading the newspapers because I've seen it there. They haven't been watching the news because I've seen it there. But it's Senate Bill 91, and it's going to go away. And the money will not be given to the places where it needs to go. And people will be evicted. So I'm just asking council to consider concurring with both the letter and the mailing. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
I've done a little bit of a dive into this to try to understand exactly what the bottleneck, where the bottlenecks are. And it's, and there's actually a community report about it that I think that is worth reviewing before we commit to a specific strategy. The barriers are many. It is a lack of awareness. It's also the administration of the program, you know, the length of the application. You know, it's literacy and, you know, needing to produce documentation. It's the limited capacity of the core agencies that are already stretched very thin. So there are many, many, and there's technology barriers. I mean, there are many, many barriers. And so while I totally, you know, I applaud the effort that Redwood City made and the, you know, the commitment with the mailer, I'm not convinced that that exactly, you know, spending $20,000 is actually going to solve the problem better than, you know, another strategy that we think through or we tasked Samantha with. And so, you know, I would, you know, I would be in favor of us tasking, you know, the staff to prioritize this and come up with a, you know, a strategy that they recommend. It might be mailers, it might not be. It might be, you know, working more closely with CAA or some of the, you know, the known apartment buildings that we have. So I just, you know, I would caution us to be too prescriptive about, you know, the one strategy over another in this, you know, in this decision point.
I didn't suggest one over another, but I have only two things to say, June 30. Thank you.
Yes, June 30.
Okay.
So is it that we'll instruct, Mr. Mayor, will we instruct the Legislative Committee to meet to come up with a letter?
Well, that was one option, or we can instruct the staff directly, too. That was the other option that I hear.
Yeah, I mean, if we have consensus on this, then I think the fastest option is just to direct staff to do it.
I agree. I agree with Councilmember Lee's comments in terms of letting staff figure out the best way to do the outreach. All right, it looks like we have a full unanimous consent on that. All right, more reports and announcements, more quick ones. Councilmember Goltz.
We have a new interim fire chief, Kent Thrasher. Feel free to reach out and congratulate him. He's going to take good care of us while we're going through the recruiting process for a new chief. So that is done.
It's a great name for interim fire chief, I think. Any more, any more announcements? Okay. All right. You know, this past week, we, San Mateo lost a legend. And I would like to adjourn this meeting in the memory of Dr. Hutchinson. He was the first African-American doctor in our county. He opened his family practice in San Mateo in a large house on the corner of a tree-lined street named Doctor's Row at 72 North San Mateo Drive. And I'm wondering, I know that corner has Hutchinson Court there, and I wonder if that was official or if somebody put that up. But probably should be official if it's not. He began practice in 1953. I found it interesting on March 3 of that year, to just give you a sense of the headwinds that he had when he was starting, like the pioneer that he was. The headline in the paper at that time was Negro MD Gets Permit in San Mateo. So can you imagine? That is front-page news. And I can imagine the, just the stuff that he had to deal with, being a trailblazer. So he's served three generations of patients, and he has touched thousands of lives within San Mateo and the nearby community. At the age of 98, he was about to retire in July. And we lost him, but I have the feeling that he was always doing the thing that he loved and what he was, answering his calling. So like to just have a quick moment of silence. Okay, thank you, everyone. Be safe.
Good night.
Ms. Ajorn.